12th in the Board of Commissioners meeting is called to order at 6:00 PM. Will Commissioner Hodges please lead the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance?
Thank you. Please stand.
Today, we meet to serve our community, to use our resources wisely and well, to represent all members of our community fairly, to make decisions and promote the common good. We recognize our responsibility to the past and the future, and the rights and needs of both individuals and community. As trusted servants, we seek blessing on our deliberations and on our efforts here today. May we all act wisely and well. Amen. Please remain standing for the Pledge of the Flag.
Will the City Clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Blank.
Present.
Vice Mayor Weinstein.
Here.
Commissioner Hodges.
Here.
Commissioner Oakley.
Here.
Commissioner Douthur.
Present.
The next item on the agenda is public comment, but I believe the approval of the agenda should come before that, so at this point, I would like to have a motion to approve the agenda.
Mayor, I would like to ask the Board to take off item number 5B, Presentations, RFP 2018-01, John's Pass Kiosk Presentation and Selection. I'd like for it to be placed, if possible, on the 626 workshop that we just approved a few minutes ago, or maybe have a special workshop for that particular item. And the reason that I am asking it is because I think that there's many issues that should be discussed in addition to the ADA requirements that Mr. DeSantis had informed us about back on March 27th, okay? There's different items that we need to comply with before any selection is done, so I think that the presentations are a little premature at this time, so I would like to ask that it be postponed, or put on the 626 agenda.
I tend to agree with Commissioner Weinstein in the fact that we don't even know what we want to do at the back of the building, because I've heard the city wants to close it in, and I'm really not for that because of the fact so many people sit there, and it's the only place you can get out of the sun and have a seat that's public in the past. There's a few benches around, but most of them are out in the sun, so I agree with that until we discuss that part also.
Makes sense to me. Okay. Do we need a vote around that, or just a consensus?
Yes, Madam Mayor, you would need a vote to remove that from the agenda and postpone it till, if it is the desire of the Board, the meeting on the 26th, or the next regular meeting of the Board, whatever the Board's pleasure is.
Do you want me to make a motion? Shall I make a motion?
Yes.
I move that the item number 5, approval of the agenda, B, Presentations, RFP 2018-01, John's Pass Kiosk Presentation and Selection, be moved from our agenda on June 12th to the special, or to the workshop on June 26, 2018.
I'll second. Do we have any discussion? Any comments from the public? Will the City Clerk? Yes.
Are the people here from the two chambers?
Yes, they are.
Yes.
You know, to, I don't know, to not give them time, you know, to drop this on the last minute when they came here, you know, I don't know if that's right or not.
Well, I do appreciate both Missy and Robin's group, both of them being here, but I do think that it's really unfair for them to really do the presentation now and then have to wait until we go back and discuss the ADA issues, and there's also some other safety issues that I've become aware of, that, so I just think that it would, it wouldn't be the best bang for our buck, I think, or for theirs.
Yes. Can you?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I realize it's been pulled at the last minute, but we're okay waiting, so when it, I mean, I would rather have your full attention than kind of do it halfway and then you have questions, so workshop's fine with us.
Okay. We want to do right by you, too. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you for your input.
Madam Mayor, if I may, would you like for the presentation to be an exclusive presentation with staff to address the concerns the Board may have specific to this item, or do you want to have it, the discussion with staff and then the presentation? I just don't want to make, I want to make sure that we're not putting effectively the cart before the horse, because if there is concerns that the Board has at that workshop, then obviously it may have us going a different direction, but if the Board decides to say we want to enter into an arrangement with either of these entities, we can place it on the first meeting in July for the same type of process that we're putting forward this evening. So I just wanted to make sure if we wanted to separate it, the staff discussion?
Yes. I think we should separate it, have it a workshop item, and then go forward at a regular meeting. Any more discussion? Will the City Clerk please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Weinstein.
Yes.
Commissioner Oakley.
Yes.
Commissioner Douthur.
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges.
Yes.
Mayor Blank.
Yes. All right, now I think we still have a approval of the agenda. That was just, was not just an approval to move that item, or is...
That is correct. It was an approval just to move that item to the workshop on the 26th.
So we need your approval for the...
So I make a motion to approve the agenda with the removal of 5B.
Okay. Do we have a second?
A second.
Madam Mayor, before the Board takes official action, we've been requested by the Tampa Bay Beaches Chamber of Commerce, they have another engagement that they would like to attend, so if it is the Board's pleasure, we would like to see if the Board would be interested in considering item 8B before we get into some of the other regular business items to be able to accommodate their request.
You just want to move it up?
Yes, Madam.
That's, that's fine. So then I got to redo the motion to approve the agenda, removing 5B and moving 8B to, like, right after 4, public comment.
After public comment, okay.
So it'd be next agenda item.
Okay.
Second. Somebody needs a second.
Yes, any more comment? Will the City Clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Oakley.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Weinstein.
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges.
Yes.
Commissioner Douthur.
Yes.
Mayor Blank.
Yes. All right, the floor is now open for public comment. Please remember that this is only for items that are not on the agenda. We have three minutes. Please speak clearly and distinctly into the microphone, state your full name and address, and be kind and respectful. Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Chelsea Nelson. My address is 420 Foca Siega Drive. I just want to come before you today to show our support for the storm valve project that's going on on our tip of Madeira Beach. I just want to say that we're really excited about it. I know that there's still some tinkering going on. I know that they don't have it 100% yet, but we're out on that tip, I'm sure many of you are familiar with, where the tropics sneeze and we flood. So we kind of got to test it out a few weeks ago when we had Tropical Storm Alberto. Typically, something like that, we would have had water up in our yards already, we would have had a whole rigmarole of moving our cars, sweating high tide mark, everything else, and we did have some water in the street, but I think it was a noticeable improvement. And I'm not an expert at that, that's just from viewing, but sometimes when we look at our Facebook page, I don't know if you guys are familiar with this, but they have like that look back of, oh, this happened this time last year, or two years from now. During this time, I think I have several photos from years past of our yard flooded and everything with the tropical storms that come this time of year. And so I just want to say that we're really excited about the possibility of these valves working, and really hopeful that they are going to do a good job. I think we've already seen some improvement with them, and I just want to show our support for that project. Thank you.
Thank you. Glad they're working. Anyone else?
For those of you who don't know us, I'm Deputy Roxby, this is Deputy Snyder, and we're your community policing deputies. We wanted to take a minute to invite everyone to our Coffee with a Cop event at McDonald's on Friday from 9:00 to 10:30. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. For those of you who don't know us, I'm Deputy Roxby, this is Deputy Snyder, and we're your community policing deputies. We wanted to take a minute to invite everyone to our Coffee with a Cop event at McDonald's on Friday from 9:00 to 10:30. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is, I'll have to raise this a little bit, my name is Woody Pershing, and I own a business, Woody's Water Sports in John's Pass. I'm also a property owner in John's Pass, and I have a tenant that's the Boardwalk Grill that's in John's Pass. I'm here to talk a little bit about allocations of monies we have raised or in process...
I'm sorry, you may speak on that, but only after we have, bring that agenda item up. This is for anything that is not actually on the agenda.
Okay.
You can speak then. Thank you. Anyone else? Public comment is now closed. Next agenda, we have the consent agenda.
I have a comment about a couple of things in the consent agenda, and one of them is the board meeting of April 10th, on page 6 to 15. The motion was carried, but it was at a 4-0 vote, no, 5-0 vote, and then on page 7, it has me voting, me as voting yes when I recuse myself from that vote, so that one, too, the motion carried a 4-0 vote. That's on page 7 of 15 for April 10th. And the one other thing I had a question about was the electrical services repair, the bid that they accepted, or the city wants to accept on that, it didn't have an endpoint to it, it just said $75 an hour, and it didn't say that there was a max of, was it $50,000, $100,000? It just kept going, so there's no end to that. The one after it, for the landscaping services, had an end. It said, this contract cannot exceed $57,000 or whatever it is, but this one doesn't have an end.
Well, with the, with the electrical services contract, we wanted to have secured three contractual arrangements with three electrical providers on an as-needed basis, so there was no definitive budget amount such as landscape, because landscape, we know that's something that we do every day, every week, or what have you, so we have budgeted funds for that. The electrical is on an as-needed basis, so it was just to be able to have, in essence, that bullpen that in the event that we call an entity to assist us, that we've already got a secured contract, we already know their billable rate, so it's just, in essence, having that, that person available in the event that we call. So there's no specific line item budget where we say we have $50,000 or $100,000, they would still have to follow the, all the appropriate protocols to go through the procurement process. If it's over a certain threshold, you know, the manager has to approve it, or it has to come back before this Board. So it was just approving the billable rate, the contracts, and those folks are utilized on an as-needed basis. If it's the pleasure of the Board, you know, when we do get over a certain threshold, we can certainly report that back, but that was just to secure those services in the event that we need them.
What is it we usually spend in that, for this contractual service?
In the past, I'm not sure if we had a specific arrangement whereby we have qualified them in the past, so I would have to be able to get that information and get it back to you, because it's probably multiple departments and multiple line items that we'd have to see what electrical has been utilized for, electrical services contractors. So this is not, this is not committing the city to any service or any funds at this particular moment, it is just basically allowing for us to execute a contract with these folks that in the event that we call, they'll answer the call, and they're required to provide the service that the city requests, so. It's similar to that of a professional services contract.
Right, but a lot of those have a designated amount they go into.
Well, it's, you know, for instance, it would be if you had a contractual relationship with an attorney, you, you have a billable rate, and that's what we've got, been provided, a billable rate that in the event that we need their services, we can certainly secure their services. It's not a flat fee contract, it's an hourly, with each one is a different rate also.
Mayor, I had a few items on that consent agenda as well. The first one refers to the workshop meeting, it's the minutes, okay, of the workshop meeting of March 27. It identifies the meeting as being April 27, and it's March 27, and it shows me as a member of the Board of Commissioners, and I was not installed until April the 10th. It's, well, it doesn't have a page number, it's after the March 7th minutes.
Yeah, it's up, Debbie, it's up top, it's one of eight.
Pardon?
It'd be one of eight. Page numbers are...
Oh, one of eight, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm first item of Board of Workshops, Board of Commissioners, Meeting Minutes, Workshop Meeting, March 27, 2018.
Okay, I see it, page one of eight.
Right.
One line, where's the mistake?
Okay, numbers present?
Yes.
It shows me as a member present, and I was in the audience.
Ah.
It's in those same minutes, I made...
They're regular meeting, maybe, let me see at the workshop, hold on.
I might have gotten a rogue page or something.
Mine does it, too.
I can check those out, I'll bring those back to the next meeting.
Okay, please do. And then the, the other item that I had, oh, Commissioner Oakley already said that on the roll call vote, for the recall thing where she recused herself, but you already clarified that, right? Okay. Then there's one other, okay, under the, I know we're not supposed to have discussion under the consent agenda, but this isn't a discussion, it's just clarifying one more time under the award of contract for electrical repair services, and also the award of contract for landscaping services. At the meeting on May the 8th, I asked Director Marsakano, I questioned the fact that the electrical bid did not show the licensed contractors' numbers, and also we did not get a copy of the declaration page from the insurance, and we did from the other two contractors, and he assured me that it would be on this set of documents, okay, and it's not. And, okay, and on the landscaping, oh, landscaping is okay, thank you.
With respect to the items that has been brought to our attention from the Vice Mayor, what we can do is if it's the Board's pleasure to approve that item, you can approve that item contingent on that they provide the information as requested, and as previously stated in the official record.
Okay, because I do want to get them, I do want to make sure that before the contract is signed, that we do have a copy of the current insurance document, okay, not the whole document, just the declaration page showing the amounts of liability and the start and the finish date, okay, and the numbers, because those are things that we request on the RFPs or the RFQs, okay, so it's not something that we're just saying we want. Thank you.
So can we, can we get a vote to approve the consent agenda?
I got something first.
Oh, you have more to add? Okay.
Yeah, on the March 27th, also on page 5, and that's a misunderstanding, it says the city receives approximately $300 to $400 per month from the ATM, and then the revenue goes to Tampa Bay Chamber of Commerce. Do we send them a check every month? Well, on the ATM at John's Pass, it says the city receives $300 to $400 a month, and that we send it back to the Chamber every month, is what it's saying here in the consent agenda, I mean, in the, in the minutes.
What's the date and page of that?
That's page 5, the second paragraph, on the 27th of March. She has an answer in the back.
Yeah. Oh, Robin was...
Yeah.
I was going to avoid this podium today. I think I clarified that evening as well, that we own the ATM, the Tampa Bay Beaches Chamber of Commerce, and we receive that check directly to us.
Right, so that line needs to be scratched.
Any more changes, corrections? And can we get a motion to approve the consent agenda with the corrections to the minutes and the corrections to, and get the documents we need for the one contract?
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda with the changes specified.
Second.
Okay, will the City Clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Douthur.
Yes.
Commissioner Oakley.
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Weinstein.
Yes.
Mayor Blank.
And actually, before the consent agenda, I was supposed to go back to the item 8B, which is the fee waiver request from the Tampa Bay Chamber.
Honorable Mayor and Commissioners, we have the, we have Robin with the Tampa Bay Beaches Chamber here. They are requesting a fee waiver for their, a new event called the Festival of Trees, and I have information that was provided within the packet. I guess Robin's here to answer any questions you have on the event, and then I can answer any further questions you may have in regards to the use of the facility.
Would you like to explain the event to us?
I'm sorry?
Would you like to explain the event to us?
Sure. So this year, we have implemented in the beginning of the year, January, the event called Festival of Trees, and the mission of that is our way of bringing back a multi-city community event that would additionally tie in our business community. We are in contract with four other beach communities to utilize their space as well, and we will host just that Festival of Trees. They are decorated trees that are bought, sponsored, and hosted by either local residents, neighborhood associations, businesses, other membership organizations, and people can tour them within their, their community and go to, to the City Hall. There will be other aspects of fellowship involved in that actual event. It is the Saturday after Thanksgiving, which coincidentally and purposely is also Small Business Saturday, so we will, in some capacities, maybe have some Christmas carolers or a Santa, depending on the municipality and what we craft that is special to that specific community. So all in all, we have presented before the City Commission of Indian Shores, Indian Rocks, Treasure Island, and St. Pete Beach, and all of those contracts are signed and in place, and we are now here today to hope that you will be a partner in this inaugural festivity, and that we can really grow it, and it'll be a nice community affair.
I have a question.
Sure.
Robin, are the other communities, are they all waiving fees?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I understand that the other communities are waiving fees, but I'd like to sort of make a suggestion, because I believe we're currently donating for our membership to the Chamber is $5,000. I'd be willing to waive the fees if maybe we could lower that to, say, $1,000. This is an event, it's not, I know we've waived fees for other Chamber kinds of meetings and things like that, but since this is an event, that's what I would propose.
So that is inaccurate. We do not get any $5,000 fee from the City of Madeira Beach at all. That would be a different organization that I'm not quite aware of, I haven't dug into where that would be going, but no, that's not accurate.
I was misinformed then.
Yeah.
I would waive the fees, but what I, I don't want to waive is any of the hard costs to the city, so if there's a staffing fee and a setup, cleanup fee that the city's actually doing, as long as the hard fees are paid, but I can, I can go with waiving the, the room rentals and those types of things, because they're not actually cost to the city.
So we would, you know, I mean, thank you for that gesture, I would say we would obviously have to visit what those costs would be to us as well, being an inaugural event, to get our arms around any other associated costs.
It'd be about $321, that's what it says right here, for those two. But that, that takes out the room rental, which is $1,281, and you have refundable deposit of $200, so that's $1,000 that you're not paying, $1,100.
Well, Matt, make another comment, please. Robin, when I did ask you about the waiver of fees, I didn't want you to think in any way that I was approving that, I was thinking that was, that was great, I think it's a great idea, I think that the Festival of Trees is also a very good community event, but I really think that it opens, my way of feeling, okay, it opens the waiver fees, once again, waiver fees for anything in our community, to all nonprofits, and the idea of renting out the facility, remember, has always been, I mean, the idea of this building has always been that were to, to make money when we rent it out, not maybe, I mean, if it rents out and the fee for the room rent by itself is the $1,281, and I guess the responsible thing really is, the way I look at it, is from the standpoint of all of our citizens, I think that the responsible thing is to charge the rate proposed and the schedule of fees, that's why we have the schedule of fees, and I guess I have to, to be, to stick with that, I have to support that.
All right. Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Since we're talking about fees on this, and it is Small Business Saturday, is there anything we can do in John's Pass about the parking fees for that day?
We had, and, and just as a point of clarity, we have in the budget on page 20, $5,000 that has been set aside for contributions to the Treasure Island Madeira Beach Chamber of Commerce, and that's in account 8400 as donation, so there, there is monies that's set aside, but we're going to get into that as part of the budget discussions. But in the conversation that we had this week with local businesses, and Commissioner Hodges was gracious enough to host said meeting here at City Hall, we had a discussion about the possibility of looking at some options to promote our small businesses on Small Business Saturday, and looking that if it was the pleasure of the Board that we can consistently look at, or look at the opportunity to effectively do not charge parking on that day to encourage people to come and shop and promote our local businesses. Now, this obviously is a policy decision that the Board would have to consider, however, it is very common throughout the country that local municipalities and the business communities really work together on this particular day to encourage folks to shop locally, so if it is something that the Board is interested in, staff would recommend that you look at waiving those fees for the entire community, because obviously we have businesses in the downtown, and we have... in the downtown, and we have other businesses, restaurants along Gulf Boulevard, et cetera. So that's something that the board can certainly consider. When we had the, the discussion with the business community, they seemed to be excited about that. And I think that's something that we can definitely promote as an opportunity for folks to come and spend their disposable income with us, as opposed to worrying about the parking issue. But that ultimately is a policy decision by this board.
So we're basically in two different conversations right here. One about waiving the fees for them, and one about the parking thing, which isn't on the agenda, we haven't really talked about.
Well, and, and I think the uni, the consistency was that it's just Small Business Saturday. You know, the topic had come up, so it's just to address that particular issue. But that obviously would be something that would have to come back to the board for some formal public policy decision. Nonetheless, it's something that, you know, came up out of the discussion, and we wanted to, to hear the, the opinion and perspective of the board. If that's something that you would be willing to look out outside of the discussion with respect to the Tampa Bay Beaches Chamber of Commerce request to utilize the space. And consistent with the representative from the Tampa Bay Beaches Chamber of Commerce, our other peer organizations have, have given concession to utilize the space to the tune, I think some of them have administratively approved it. But I, I know that was something that we wanted to get policy direction from the board, because effectively, the board should have the authority and is realistically the only entity that has the authority to, to effectuate a waiver of fees.
So should we bring the waiver of fees for that Small Business Saturday back to a workshop?
Yeah, that, that would be something that we can certainly bring back to a workshop, yeah. How does the board wish to, to address this particular item? Because there was conversations about the hard costs, and then there was conversations about the, the total costs and those types of things. And so staff is just trying to seek direction as to how you would like for us to proceed. At this particular moment, the recreation director can probably, have we secured the, have we blocked the facility for that particular date? Uh, yes. And to be honest, traditionally, that weekend is, is not a highly sought-after weekend as far as facility usage. I'm sure somebody watching right now is calling to reserve it, but it's not typically used. So as far as a, a loss of revenue that you may think we might incur, it's not something that is normally full. And as far as the inclusion of the rec staff and everything, I, I think this is a minimally involvement for an organization that the city is actually a member of. So I think this is kind of a full circle thing. Again, we'll do whatever you guys vote direction-wise, but I think this is something that we'd like to participate in.
You know, I, I think Robin was kind of hedging on paying the fixed cost. I think she needs to go back and think about that, and then come back to us and ask again, you know?
May I?
Yes, go ahead.
Depending on your conversation, I have the authority to make a good decision.
They might not consider it good, but it'll be a decision, right?
You know, I, I'm on the lines of asking for forgiveness instead of permission at times.
There you go. You know, also, in, in the write-up, it said that you would be donating to charities. And what charities are we talking about? What, where are we going with that?
Very good question. So we put out a list of all of the registered not-for-profit charities that are members of the Tampa Bay Beaches Chamber of Commerce, and put that out in the community. So far, for two votes, and we think we have one more round of voting to go. So the, the charities were given an option to self-nominate or have someone nominate them. That list came in to our organization, and then we submitted that list out into our membership community, and actually, in our non-member list, because we have cross-participation for voting. So the actual nonprofit selected has not come to a full vote yet, but then it's, it's been voted by our members and community partners.
Thank you.
I'm all for waiving the fee, Robin, to be honest with you, because I feel this is going to generate business down in John's Pass. It's going to bring people down into that area. And I think that's really important. It's only a couple of weeks before Christmas at that point, and people are out shopping. Why not do it here in John's Pass? So I'm, I'm for it.
It's being held over here at the rec center.
Right. At the rec center?
Yes, being held right here.
Right, it's being held in the, what is it, the Boga Room or the?
Yeah, the, I'm sorry, I don't know the name of it. I call it the meeting room.
It's a lovely room.
It's a great multipurpose room. That's why we, we so advantageously asked.
But still, this supports the local businesses, too.
Correct. And there's an aspect of this that is going to support local business for those that don't have a storefront. So we are going to allow tabletop setup to sell, potentially, you know, those that can do it, the items that they might sell, maybe they do crafts out of their home or something like that, where they, they not going to get traffic to their home or at John's Pass. And obviously, we work closely with the pass, so there will be cross-promotion from that aspect. And, I mean, if I have to put my two cents in, the, the parking situation, you know, should, should you all discuss that and, and move in one direction, which is waiving it, it, as a Chamber of Commerce, that is just such great publicity on a Small Business Saturday that, that a large agency like American Express is already promoting phenomenally, that you ride on the coattails and have some wonderful press in your community. I just think that's great.
All right, well, I'm going to open the floor for public comment. Is there any public comment? Floor is now closed for public comment. Any more discussion from the board or staff?
I'd like to make a motion that we pass this, waiving the fee, but they pay the fixed cost.
I'll second.
Any more discussion? The city clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Dowther?
Yes.
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Weinstein?
No.
Mayor Blatt?
Yes.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Next on the agenda is the ordinance 2018-03, Amending Fees and Collection Procedures Manual.
Director? How about the, the word of the contract before that?
We already did that.
That was on consent.
Oh, that was all on consent?
Yes. Director Portal?
This is the second reading of the fee ordinance, the fee manual ordinance. Certainly an item you've had lots of opportunities to discuss in the pass. No changes have been made since it was approved on first reading. We do have it available, but don't, I haven't brought up a presentation. If you have any questions, all the department heads are here.
I have a couple of questions.
It, it says parking permit may be purchased on a weekly or monthly basis for up to 50% of the metered parking space. Who determines this up to 50%?
It's on page nine. It's Article 3, Section D. It's just kind of arbitrary when it says up to 50%.
Right. That's a good question.
I think what the, the intent behind that is effectively saying that you, it puts in, in essence, a cap as to how many spots that you can effectively sell permits to. So you can't, I can't sell temporary permits for the entire parking lot. I can only.
So you're just, you're looking at spots not up to 50% off the price?
Right, right, right.
Okay, got it. In E, Parking Fines and Penalties, number three, it says parking in a no parking zone. Are these ones that were referred to in this parking ordinance back in the back? It was on page five of which, of the parking?
Yes, when we get to that, that.
There was that one, and then other improper parking, which took into double parking and all the other things that, that you're putting into that ordinance.
That's right, yes.
So that, that accounts for that one. And I have one other question, and it was on page 14, the Bell Tower, is that a new rental?
Yes.
Okay.
As Kitty Stewart is. Kitty Stewart is also.
Okay. Thank you, that's all.
Well, I think we worked really hard on this. I think Linda worked especially hard on it, and the staff, and I think we, probably Commissioner Lister would say we kicked the can down the road a lot. So I've, I don't know if anybody else is, but I'm ready to, to move that we accept the ordinance.
We need to have the city clerk read the ordinance title into record.
I agree, sorry. Ordinance.
No.
No.
Blinking.
Blinking.
Might be because those are on.
Yeah, yours is on now, Claire.
It was, that was my actual. Ordinance 2018-03, and Ordinance of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, Amending the Fees and Collections Procedures.
Okay, so I move to approve ordinance 2018-03 on this second and final reading.
Is that your motion?
Pardon?
The motion?
I move.
She moved.
The motion.
Okay, my second.
That's our new word.
Any discussion from the audience? Public comment is now closed. Any more discussion from staff or commission? City clerk, will you please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Weinstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Dowther?
Yes.
Mayor Blatt?
Yes. Next, we have ordinance 2018-04, Amendment to Nonconforming Structures, Second Reading and Public Hearing. Director Portal?
Madam Mayor, Commissioners, this is also second reading. There were no changes proposed at the time of the first reading, and staff is not proposing any changes. There may be people here who would like to speak to the item. The purpose in this was to address conditions where we have nonconforming structures all over town, a, a whole lot of them, sometimes almost every structure in a neighborhood has a setback, encroachment, and they're unable to make any improvements because of that.
All right, I'll open the meeting for public comment on this item.
Good evening. I'm Dan with Lombardo Construction. I have a client, Vicki Clark. She lives in property on, is it Third Street? Anyhow, she's affected by this, this amendment. I'd like to illustrate here how we're trying to add a small bedroom to her very small house now. She has plenty of room in her lot, but this house was constructed with, with a very small setback, and probably was done so by code at the time. But they most likely, I haven't got confirmation on this, but they most likely changed the zoning after the fact. So she's owner of this house, and she wants to add a small bedroom to turn it in, convert it from a one-bedroom, one-bath, to a two-bedroom, one-bath. Still very small house, but that's all they're asking. Unfortunately, they cannot move it. The code will require them to set this back about five feet. And I'm, that's why I brought this poster here, so I'm going to show you. If they move this over, there's a power panel here, this is her kitchen, this is a doorway to the back. There's no way for her to build this addition unless she gets this ordinance passed. There's another problem, though, with this ordinance as it, okay? Just going to show you this, is that there's a provision here that requires, let me move that here. It requires a neighbor's approval, okay? Now, the problem is that if you have a, a given setback, and you're allowed to build on that setback, you can build with or without the neighbor's approval. If you want to encroach on that, you apply for a variance, and then you have a hearing, and neighbors have to weigh in, which makes sense. But because her situation is unique, where she has a house that she purchased, it has this given setback, and then they change the, the setbacks later in time, she's stuck in a nonconforming house, right? So if we pass this, great, but if we require the neighbor's approval, she can get shot down again. She has a neighbor now, there's 100% certainty it will not pass. The, the neighbor will, will not allow this to happen. So I'm just here on behalf of her. She's out of state. They live here half the time of year, and they've been here quite a while. I'm just here on her behalf, trying to illustrate her particular situation. Thank you for your time.
Does this affect the neighbor in any way whatsoever?
Uh, no.
Then they just don't like her, or is it a personal thing? Or is it?
Madam Mayor, I believe the neighbors here can probably speak for herself.
Yeah, the neighbor is probably here, and she's probably going to speak. Does it impose on the neighbor? You'd have to ask the neighbor. But it doesn't, it doesn't move her existing property. As you could see there, doesn't move it any closer to the fence line, okay? It, it, the, the addition is the gray area. On my poster here, it's the blue, highlighted blue area. So the wall does not move anymore, just follows the line.
So that outer, outer part of it is, is the fence that runs down the whole property line there?
Uh, correct. This would be the fence.
And what's, what's the setback?
The setback now from the existing house to the fence is two feet and, say, eight to 10 inches.
And it's, what is it, five feet now?
It's the, the, correct. The setback is five feet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else wish to speak?
Yes, said neighbor.
I'm sorry, you have to speak into the microphone?
Yes, I live, I'm Catherine Collier. I live right next to the.
Your name and address.
13145, Third Street.
And your name?
Catherine Collier.
Thank you.
And their address is 13149. In fact, I suggested you to be the contractor of the house to Vicki, who's my friend. And I don't object to them adding on. I don't care if they add the Taj Mahal. But when they added their, I've been here before, you've heard me speak, when that same property owner added pool and pavers, as did the property behind me, I became their retention pond. I had to put boots on to step off my deck, because attention was not paid to run off. And they're eight inches or so higher, and so I'm perpetually wet, especially in the summer. It's soggy even now. So I think that's the result of too much, too fast. And so when I spoke to Linda and to Al Carrier, who was totally aware of my situation, the day after the pavers went down was the first day my yard flooded. The family has had the property since the 80s. It has never flooded until the pavers went down. So the whole issue about notifying the neighbor, I mean, I live here full-time. There's snowbirds, the other people have weekly rentals behind me. I have to live with the consequences of renovations. So drainage is a big deal, and no attention was paid to that. And certainly, that error has been fixed since my experience. But the neighbors should get that much respect to be made aware of what the intentions are in the immediate environment. I don't think it's an unreasonable thing. Now, again, I'm not going to step in the way, I'm going to be a neighborly, neighbor, and if they want to grow, fine. But I am not willing to live with the consequences of renovation after renovation after renovation. And I don't think anybody should have to do that. Does that make sense?
Do you live on the side where the fence is? Do you live on the side where the fence is?
Yeah, I'm right immediately next door.
And how far is your setback there?
Well, they're on my driveway side. Their house is three inches from the boundary.
Three feet.
I'm sorry, three feet. Seems like three.
They're two feet, you're three feet, so there's five feet.
No, I don't know, I don't know what, mine's a whole driveway, mine's 10 feet from the boundary, because it's my driveway side, but their house is three feet from the boundary. But, you know, I mean, we know they all are in that neighborhood.
Right.
Because they were built in the 30s or 40s or whatever.
Three minutes.
So yes, they want to add on, and they want to stay in that nonconformance, I get that.
Excuse me, your three minutes is up.
Okay, that's it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
You've already spoken, I'm sorry.
Madam Mayor, prepared to answer any questions.
So in voting for this ordinance, it's going to take them out of the picture of being able to add on in that format that he's shown us?
What, this ordinance states that they need to have a signed approval of the neighbor in order to proceed. It also requires a quasi judicial hearing before the plan board, or Planning Commission, excuse me. So what the contractor who spoke was suggesting is that the neighbors not be required to actually approve it. Obviously, they'd be notified because we'd be having a hearing. But, and Ms. Collier was suggesting that it should be still the requirement that the neighbors sign off, actually sign approval, so that if they're being impacted by the reduction of setbacks, they have the ability to agree to that. The way it's written right now, I would not accept an application if they didn't bring with the application the signed release and approval of the neighbors.
What the ordinance does is sets up something called an exception. And the exceptions would go to the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission would make a decision. The ordinance as drafted would require the neighbors to agree to be able to proceed through this exception-type process. There's still a process called a variance, but you'd have to apply for a variance separately. That goes to the special magistrate, and you have to meet all the criteria for a variance, including that it's the minimum variance necessary to allow reasonable use of their property. Variants is a very strict standard. It's hard to get a variance. This exception was created by the planning director as a proposal to account for a lot of the nonconformities in the city, and allow people to build in that line of nonconformity, if you will, with something less than a variance, because most of these people would not qualify for a variance, given their circumstances.
Right.
And you can't expand a nonconformity unless you had some kind of exception written into the land development code to allow for the expansions of nonconformity.
Correct, and to give you an idea how pressing an issue it is to be able to do something that, I've put a slide behind you that shows this specific neighborhood, and I redlined all of the property lines that are encroached upon. You can see almost every house in the neighborhood is encroached in one side or another, some in more than one direction. So it ties everything up, you know, nobody can expand their houses with this code in place.
Can you just do an ordinance to address nonconforming neighborhoods?
We need, we do need a separate set of codes that addresses our setbacks by way of performance, the way that they interact with other properties, and I'm working on that. We want to go through a community hearing process on developing a new code, because what happened is all of this got built, and then they overlaid the setbacks, and everything became nonconforming, which is not, it's not usable for you. We need a code that's more responsive to the actual conditions on the ground. Because we do have a redevelopment process that says that if they build up, if they take these houses down, they can build on the same nonconforming footprint. So we don't, we're not even assured that over time it's going to become more conforming. In fact, we have a process that assures it will stay nonconforming, so we need to fix the code, yes. In the meantime, I did want to allow people some opportunity to make improvements.
Madam Mayor, if I may, Director Portal, if someone goes through this special exception process, and they meet all the criteria, is it safe to say that they effectively would get that approval?
Yes, because it's quasi judicial, so the only thing that the Planning Commission will be considering is the code and how they've met it. The purpose in even having that hearing is that sometimes neighbors can, other people can come in and maybe observe things about the application of the code that just the staff wouldn't have seen. What, what some had proposed was that if, if people come in and they meet all the criteria, and the neighbor has already signed off, that they shouldn't even need a hearing. The staff could give the approval, but if the neighbor doesn't sign off on it, then they would go to a hearing to allow an opportunity for that all to be discussed in public. It's kind of-
But as drafted, you would have to have the neighbor approval as one of the criteria for approval. If you don't, a neighbor that objects, it could not be approved.
Right, right now, the way it's written right now, yes.
And that's why I posed that question, to allow for the public to be aware that if someone goes through that special exception process, and they effectively accomplish everything that is outlined, that they will, in essence, be approved. And so that may be something that we end up hearing from folks as to, well, if there's a special exception, Kent Board, do X, Y, or Z, the planning is owning. If they, if you set out a process, and they've effectively accomplished that, then you have to allow for them to do what they're proposing to do.
Mayor, I have, when we started this conversation on this ordinance 2018-04, back in April, I think it was, I've walked around a lot of the neighborhoods that are affected by this, okay? A lot of the areas of our city are just built on a consistent pattern of violation, you know, and that's just happened over the years, you know, it's just one of those things. It's just happened with different administrations, et cetera. And so I studied Linda's research and how she developed this particular ordinance, and I'm comfortable with it. I'm comfortable with the idea that it does require the neighbors. I know I've probably been in that situation myself before on different things, where it might be okay and it might not, but I think that that's a very fair way and a equitable way of handling this particular situation, you know, this inconsistency and nonconformity.
Anybody else have any comments they would wish to make?
I think there's one more.
My name is Tom Dronasky. I'm working with a client-
Sorry, what is your name?
Can you speak into the microphone a little bit?
Closer.
This has to be recorded.
My name is Tom Dronasky. I'm a-
A little closer.
Anyway, I'm working with a client on Boca Seega Drive, similar situation. In fact, I had the pleasure of speaking with Ms. Weinstein earlier about that situation. I think you may have checked that area out, but we're in the same situation. The property was built many years ago, and we're not, based on the new codes, we're not conforming to the front setbacks. Well, the home's been there a long time, and we want to stay on the same footprint. This project that Linda has been gracious in trying to develop will, in fact, put us on a level playing field, and for that, I encourage you to adopt this and at least make it fairer to most parties that are already there. Obviously, a lot of these homes were built long before zoning went into effect, so they're kind of in a catch-22. It does seem like it's fair as to trying to get the neighbors to accept and be on the same page, and fortunately, we have that, but nonetheless, we encourage your approval of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Public comment is now closed. Any more discussion on the commission?
I'd like to move that we accept-
I need to read the ordinance.
Oops, sorry, sorry. I keep jumping the gun on that.
I actually should be reading the titles before ending the discussions.
Sorry.
Ordinance 2018-04, and ordinance of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending Part II Code of Ordinances, Chapter 110, zoning, Article III, nonconformances, Section 110-93, three, intent concerning nonconforming property, structures, and uses, allowing for approval of extensions and improvements to nonconforming residential structures under certain conditions, and based on findings of consistency with neighborhood character, nonconflict with neighboring properties, and as needed to provide expanded and improved affordable housing opportunity and quality, finding the amendment consistent with the city comprehensive plan, providing for reading by title only, providing for severalability, providing for repealing clause, and providing for an effective date.
Okay, I can do it now. I move to accept ordinance 2018-4, and I don't have to repeat all the rest of it, right? Okay. To be adopted and effective immediately after the, this is the second hearing, second and final hearing.
Okay, second. Any more discussion? Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Weinstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Commissioner Douthur?
Yes.
Mayor Blak?
Yes. Next, we have Resolution 2018-05, parking revenues allocation of the additional 50 cents.
Madam Mayor, if I could have the city clerk read the resolution title into the official record.
Resolution 2018-05, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners for the city of Madeira Beach, Pinellas County, Florida, establishing the percentage allocation for the additional revenues associated with 2018 parking fee increase as proposed in ordinance 2018-03, and providing for an effective date.
Madam Mayor, members of the board, when the board effectively took action on ordinance 2018-03, it allowed for the parking to increase from $2 an hour to $2.50 per hour. Per the discussions that staff had with the Board of Commissioners at previous meetings, there was discussions about the 50 cents allocation, additional revenue, and where would that 50 cents allocation be, in essence, earmarked to. The discussions led us to appropriate or to set aside 25 cents or 50% of the projected increase of $413,000 to restrict it in a fund for the purposes of paying down debt service. There was discussions about the remaining 25 cents being invested into infrastructure and curing some of the deferred maintenance deficiencies we have citywide. That conversation also spun into subsequent conversations with respect to a potential allocation or how the board wanted to address the requests by the merchants from John's Pass Village. Staff has done some research and looked at the monies that staff was able to receive associated with the 2010 Deepwater Horizon oil spill. To date, the city has received $452,123. That is a, in the budget right now, and can be expended for any purposes that the board deems to be fit. In conversations with members from the merchant community, as well as public work staff, custodial staff, there is definitely a need for some improvements to occur in John's Pass Village, whether it be cosmetic, streetscape, hardscape, landscape, restroom facilities, et cetera. So staff is proffering, if the board is inclined to consider, to appropriate $125,000 from the Deepwater Horizon BP oil spill settlement monies to make some capital investments in John's Pass Village as part of the fiscal year 2019 budget. Also, the staff is going to be looking at bringing other capital projects as part of the budget process to be able to provide you a litany of opportunities to make some capital, sizable capital investments. Some are already budgeted for. Unfortunately, they are not able to be completed this fiscal year because of the timeframe that we're working on at this particular moment. So right now, staff is asking direction from the board on two issues. One, how you would like to effectively spend the additional 25 cents, or how you would like to earmark those funds. And two, if the board is amenable to including that $125,000 request as part of the fiscal year 2019 budget that we will be discussing this week. At this time, staff stands prepared to answer any questions the board may have.
So even if we agree to $125,000 from the BP oil spill, we'll still look at other opportunities that we can help out at John's Pass?
That is correct, Madam Mayor.
Where it comes from.
Right, that is correct.
How much do we spend on the pass annually now?
Right now, in the past, we have about $152,000. That's operation and maintenance monies. And that's for, you know, trash pickup, cleanup, custodial, those types of things.
Personnel?
Personnel, those types, yes. And-
And you bring in how much?
Excuse me?
How much?
In parking revenue?
Only John's Pass.
John's Pass revenue, what we anticipate, we did a brief analysis, and we looked at the months of January, February, and March, and the anticipated revenue, or the revenue collected was $519,000. And when we look at that $519,000, we looked at Village Boulevard, John's Pass, and John's Pass Park, and that accounts for 80% of the revenue the city collected in parking receipts. So in essence, if you extrapolate that over the fiscal year, you're looking at probably about anywhere from 75% to 80% of your parking revenue is concentrated in that particular area.
Well, I don't, I don't agree with using John's Pass Park or South Beach in that equation because it has nothing to do with John's Pass. That is more of a place people go, park there and go to the beach. They go out fishing out there. I want to, I want to know what the parking revenue is for John's Pass Village in its proper.
If you, if you look at just Village Boulevard, just Village Boulevard alone, it still accounts for 45% of the total revenue collected by the city. As part of this study, it's 44% or $230,000, but when we extrapolate it through the budget process, you generate about, Village Boulevard generates about, close to $900,000, and you collect about 2.1 million in total.
So that includes the parking lot behind the BFW and Village, those two parking lots? Because those are the only two we have down there.
Correct.
Okay.
I would like to see the $125,000 for the John's Pass Village, put into John's Pass Village, and then the allocation of the additional amount of 25% resulting from the parking increase that we're generating right now at this time. I think that John's Pass needs it. They're our number one destination here in Pinellas County. We need to take care of them.
If we're gonna dedicate so much, a percentage or anything to John's Pass, what about all the other businesses and restaurants on the beach that's not at John's Pass? You know, how do we sit there and say, okay, well, you get 1%, you get 2%? You know, to me, it's not right. If we put the money in for like our infrastructure or operational needs, then we can always pull it out if something needs to be done in John's Pass and do that. I just hate locking the money into, here, it's on the John's Pass.
Right, because it's not just, it's just not a slush fund, I don't think, for them to have to do whatever, you know, you know, go beautify or go do whatever. It needs to be a structured plan on how the capital projects down there are being done, and just a lotting amount of money isn't going to solve the problem. Because I think that the bigger problem is the infrastructure for the city, and that extra quarter needs to start out and take care of this building. We've got rust right here in this room. We have rust outside in the poles. The rec center has rust. We have a lot of problems. We need a generator for this building for storm season. We have a lot of things that we need to take care of, infrastructure. Then once that gets settled down, and we know about what it's going to take to do the infrastructure on a yearly basis, then we can start doing this out to other parts of town. But you still got to keep in mind, we've got, we've still got Archibald that'll take care of all the parks in the beaches, because that can't be spent for infrastructure or anything else. It's totally pulled out of that whole equation.
Well, I pretty much agree with you. As far as the extra 25 cents, we should probably be put that towards the infrastructure. And part of that may eventually even be something at John's Pass Village, but in the meantime, I think it'd be a good idea to take that part of the BP oil spill money and put it to that purpose.
Yeah, I think, I think the BP oil money, yes, you know, and then when we work on the budget, you know, what the city needs to come to us and say, okay, here's some major projects that we need to do- us and say, okay, here's some major projects that we need to do at John's Pass. And then we allocate at that time. But to say, I'm going to put 25 cents or 25% or whatever, you know, I think is wrong. I think it just need to come to us with, with the capital projects that need to be done down there. And for us, they say, okay, let's get this done because it needs to be done. I think that's the way it needs to be done.
Well, there's a lot of general maintenance that needs to be done. You can't wait for something to actually fall apart before you start working on it to fix it.
That's what's happening right here in this building. That's why we need to get that figured out, how we're going to handle it.
I still feel like John's Pass needs the help. There's things down there that need to be taken care of. You've got people down there who are not just working down there, they're business owners. I mean, they, they pay taxes here in the city. One person pays over $42,000 a year in taxes. We need to take care of these people. You know, they can move out at any time. And they move out, we don't have John's Pass anymore. Then what do we have? We have the beaches. Well, so does Reddington. So does Treasure Island. We need John's Pass, and we need to take care of the people down there. We need to, you know, help them out in any way we can. They are very, they're very busy down there when it comes to the parking. They generate a lot of business for the city. So they do deserve to get a portion of that back.
And I'm not saying-
I don't think we disagree with that.
I'm not disagreeing with that one iota, you know. I'm just saying that what we need to do is rather than say, okay, let's say we say 25% of the money goes to John's Pass. When we run out of that money and the boardwalk still needs to be fixed, and we haven't got any money left, then what do we do? Versus saying, this needs to be done, and we need to have it in our capital improvement plan and, and budget it that way. Versus, you know, okay, we're going to put this money in there, if it runs out, hey, sorry about your luck down there.
Take that attitude.
I'm not, that's what I'm saying, if you dedicate that money, then that's what you're doing. You're saying it's for here and for nothing else.
But then are you going to dedicate just the money that comes out of John's Pass for that extra quarter? Or are you going to take the whole city's money?
I'm not taking the whole city's money. There's money, there's money in BP settlement for other things, too. I think John's Pass is really important to the city, and we need to take care of them. We need to get things done down there.
I think we're talking about two different things we need to split this.
Right.
Because we're talking about, you know, the 125 on the BP oil spill, and we're talking about the resolution as it stands now.
BP shouldn't be a part of it.
No, it shouldn't be. It's a separate issue. But I believe, Commissioner, you were trying to make a motion, but you didn't actually use the word motion, to approve the $125,000? Am I correct?
No, I wasn't making a motion. I was making a statement.
Okay.
Not a motion.
All right.
May I say something?
Yes.
I was about to say, my name is Debbie Weinstein, because normally I'm out there talking. But anyway.
Where do you live?
But anyway, well, John's Pass Village is where I've lived for 42 years. John's Pass Village is my front yard. So I'm very, very concerned and always want, and have worked on many, many projects with the city and with the merchants down in John's Pass. I think that I've, I've seen the progress, I've seen what we haven't done. I think that we need, the situation our city is in right now, I think that we're going to do a whole lot better. And I know that the merchants, I know a lot of the merchants who have mentioned to me that they haven't been taken care of in the past. Well, you know, this is a different commission. And I think that we all see and recognize the need for infrastructure to go into John's Pass, John's Pass Village. I certainly do. I see it every day. But I do believe that out of that 50 cents, you know, the quarter should go for that debt payment, and the other 25 cents should go into an infrastructure fund as Commissioner Dowther and I guess Oakley said. Because there are so many areas that we do need to consider in the 2018-19 budget process, okay? We do need to consider a generator. And I was thinking also of how I want to see John's Pass look good, but I want to see it look good as part of Madera Beach. I, I want a plan. I often remember a past city manager always telling me, when we would get on the subject, which was very often, always remember, Debbie, John's Pass is a part of Madera Beach. Madera Beach is not a part of John's Pass. Now, take it for what you want to, but I do think that if we put the 25 cents in that infrastructure fund, I will work very diligently. I can assure the, the property owners in John's Pass will, will not be disappointed if it's got anything to do with me as far as making it come up to snuff and making it look good. But I do think that besides, you know, John's Pass, it is a citywide, it's a citywide money. You know, it's, all that money needs to go in citywide funds. I advocate for lots of different things, our beach crossover walkways, our bicycle wraps on the lots to the beach. All these things will help John's Pass. They will help the whole city. So that's the way I'm looking at it.
Also, I, I think, you know, in a year or, or six months or whatever, you know, we can always go back, this is a resolution, we can always go back and redo this resolution. You know, I, I think it behooves all of us in the city to, you know, take care of John's Pass. And I'm not saying it should. I just hate saying, well, this pot of money is for this and this other.
Dedicated.
You know, I think, you know, the merchants of John's Pass, I mean, Jonathan said he was, city manager said he was meeting with the city business owners the other day, now they should be coming in, hey, we need this done. And that will be part of our capital improvements that we're going to be working on when we hit the budget. I, I think that's the way we need to look at it, rather than say, oh, we're going to take care of this, and the heck with the rest of it. You know, I, I think we need to look at the whole big picture, kind of like Debbie was just saying.
All right, so let's, I think we've pretty much discussed it. Let's take this one item at a time. And first of all, is there any public comment on the discussion about taking the BP oil settlement money of $125,000?
But that's not even on this agenda item.
The, the way I specifically structured the agenda item was consistent with the discussions we had at the previous meeting, that that was an opportunity to set aside funds for capital improvements in John's Pass. So in the staff recommendation, it is that I would like some direction from the board to say, Mr. City Manager, that $125,000, we're comfortable with you putting that in the fiscal year 2019 budget for projects in that particular area. The, the item that you effectively would be handling is the resolution, but I certainly would like some clarity from the board with respect to that $125,000 because I've already asked staff, and then we're going to go back to the folks in the village and reconcile a list of some cosmetic improvements that need to occur, and be able to start putting together a, a price tag. Because what I want to do is to show the board, and the public for that matter, every dollar that we spend out of that money and what we are going to accomplish, and then we'll start on, on phase two. So that's why I'd like to get the go-ahead from the board so we can start really getting this stuff together. Because there's nothing that precludes us from, even if the board's desires to say, Mr. City Manager, start looking at spending that money now, we can, we can utilize that money now, the way in which it's budgeted, we can have access to it now. If we put it in FY19, there's just more planning that goes into it to actually associate what capital projects to it. So I, I, I would like clarity from the board on the 125, and then we can dispel of the, dispose of the resolution.
But if, if you, not knowing what's in, what's coming down the pike in next year's budget, I, I don't feel comfortable in giving up the 125 until we see the whole big picture. And that's just going to be happening like tomorrow and the next day, and whenever the other budget meetings are. So I think we need to put that on hold until we see what's coming down the pike. Because we don't, I don't know.
Can we get consensus that it's something we need to communicate, talking about, and do that at the next workshop?
Not the next workshop, but the next budget meeting. That's when it needs to be brought up.
Well, start there.
So we can see where, where it's, how it's going to impact us then, at that point.
I'm also not of the opinion that $125,000 should be immediately allocated from that fund. I think that we've got a very short period of time to, to, you know, pass on and talk more about the budget. And I don't want, I don't want that figure to, I understand where you're coming from, City Manager, but I would feel more comfortable in looking at it as a total plan and going from there, not having, you know, the $125,000 become involved in this particular, in this resolution.
So the consensus is that we will discuss it in future?
But the other factor is that anything over the manager's purchasing threshold, and everything that we do over there is going to be over the manager's purchasing threshold, it's going to have to come back to this board. So my intent behind that 125 is to put the money aside, and then we can start planning because I still, we have our internal budget process, then we're going to go talk to the folks at the village to say, hey, what are some things? Then we're going to reconcile, and we'll be able to get a defined plan. But if the board is not, if the board's not committed in allocating that 125 or 25 or whatever that amount is, I don't want to ask the merchants to, or to put together a list, and then there's not that, that, that funding that's been set aside to say, okay, this is the target mark that we're looking for. Because there's a lot of time and effort that goes into that.
We're not saying we don't want to do it this year. We want to see what's coming up in next year's budget because we don't know what the unknown is. What, what could be happening that we might really need that other $125,000 to put in for the generator, to put in for something else that's really critical to the, the running of the city. And, and we're not saying we're not going to do it this year, we're just saying, let's see what's happening in the budget that you all are proposing for next year, and see if we actually feel the need for that right now.
And I, I think where I'm coming from, and I, I might be barking up the wrong tree here, but the last time a real commitment, and I mean a real commitment, I think, was that was made to John's Pass Village was truthfully, all the way back in 2002. That was when, I think it was 2002, when the pavers were installed and certain lighting, and definitely the lighting needs redoing. I mean, there's so many things, okay? But I think that it, I, I guess I think that it, we need a, a visioning plan with it, with, just like we did in 2002.
Right.
We did that. And it was composed of property owners in the village, it was composed of the city manager, a representative maybe from, from the Board of Commissioners, a couple of citizens in there. And yes, I guess I, I feel like the $125,000 can hold. I think that we will, yeah, I don't want to, I don't want to commit myself to the $125,000 because I have visions of it being more. So go for it.
I think I would, I'm in favor of $125,000. But what I would like to see is a list of what they're going to do for the 125. You know, I want to see that list, okay? But yes, I would, I would definitely set aside the 125 out of the BP money that's just sitting there anyway. Excuse me. So, but that, since that's not part of this resolution, we really can't vote on that at this point unless we add that as part of the resolution. Am I correct?
You can, you can vote, it's been, it's been properly noticed and it's been placed on the agenda, so you effectively can vote on it. The, the resolution is something, what I, what I want from the board is if the board's desire is to discuss this item more specifically as part of the budget process, then the board can say, you know, Mr. City Manager, we'd like to discuss capital projects in the village as part of the budget process. That gives me direction so staff can go back and look at our capital projects and, and see what are specific to the village. Or the board can say, Mr. City Manager, we're okay with putting that $125,000 in capital projects, and you go forth and work with our merchants and, you know, the public work staff and custodial staff and other stakeholders to get a list of what those projects consist of, and then bring that, that forward for further discussion. But there's things that, if we buy trash receptacles, it, there's things that invariably you're not going to see as the board because they're under a certain threshold. But if there's something that we're overhauling the rest, restrooms, that's obviously going to come to you because it has to go out through a competitive process, et cetera. So that's, there's some small things that we'd like to get done sooner rather than later, and there's some things that are going to take more planning, working with the folks in, in the village. So that's kind of the thought process behind why we wanted to say, let's set this money aside because there's some really simplistic, the signage, the signage throughout there can certainly be improved. You know, so there's, there's those little cosmetic things, the planters, the, some of the hardscape, some of those simple repairs, curving, those things. But we can, we can handle the situation whichever the board's desire is.
Well, I'd like to make a, a motion that we accept resolution 2018-05, parking revenue with the addition of the $125,000 allocated from the BP money for John's Pass, and for 50% or 25 cents going to infrastructure, and 50% or 25 cents going to the debt.
Can we put those all in one motion?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Do we have a second?
Guess that got shot down.
I still want to wait until the city manager sits down with us in the next couple of days and goes over the capital improvements. And we all have a defined, a better feeling, not, yeah.
It's not even going to be a week before we see that, so I don't know why we can't wait a week on the 125.
Then we can make the motion just to do the 25, or the 50%, 50% or 25 cents each, and not do the 125,000 at this point.
Just have a consensus.
Are you moving your motion?
No, I'm just saying, we can.
Yes, and have a consensus to come back and discuss it at the budget meetings in the next few days.
Right.
I'd like to amend the, the motion then because there was no second on it, on John's motion. So I would like to move that we accept resolution 2018-5, giving 50% or 25 cents to the infrastructure community fund, and 50% or 25 cents to the debt service payments, and allow, that's it.
I'll second that.
All right, we now have public comment open. Everyone wish to discuss anything?
I'm Matthew Powers with Mad Beach Craft Brewing Company of the Florida Winery and Island Rags, and also sit on the John's Pass Village Merchants Association. First, I'd like to thank most of you I've met with in the last several weeks since the last commission meeting. And again, I find myself sitting here extremely disheartened at the lack of foresight, probably the easiest way to put it, that this is not giving anything to us. We're doing our job at John's Pass. We've created, and we continue to create, and we'll, we'll continue to create regardless of what happens here, an amazing location. We're looking for you guys to invest in, in your business there, in your businesses, those meters. Without investing in yourself, we continually reinvest in our own business. We're always cleaning our building up, starting new businesses, creating a brewery that took over a million dollars to make. And, you know, you guys sit there with your own little business, a pretty lucrative one, a million dollars a year, you know, for doing nothing, basically. And we're just asking for you guys to do your part like we do, to reinvest in it. It's nice to hear you guys are for reinvesting in John's Pass, but your lifespan as commissioners is extremely short, you know, a few years at most. By putting something aside for us, yes, it can be taken away, but it's a lot, you know, a harder chance that that's going to happen. You know, we're just looking for something that, you know, should have been given all along. Other than that, you know, that's all we've got for you guys tonight. Thank you.
Five seconds. Look, I only did two minutes and 30 seconds now, or not?
We'll start over.
We'll try it again. I'm Woody Pershing. I am a business owner. I own Woody's Water Sports, and also a property owner. And I have on the property, I have a tenant boardwalk. So we have two businesses on the property. I pay the property tax. Mine is not 42,000, thank goodness. I still pay property tax. And I have to say that I'm very proud of John's Pass. And I don't know anyone in this room or anybody that is in the Madera Beach area that hasn't had a relative or a friend or somebody from the north, as soon as you mention Madera Beach, mention John's Pass. I love to go to John's Pass. I love it for whatever reason it is. If it's a boardwalk, I like to say maybe everybody wants to go jet skiing, but I know that's not true. So there's a lot of reasons to like John's Pass. It's a very, very good situation we're in here. Now, it's not only Madera Beach, it's Pinellas County, it's the whole Tampa Bay area. We're a destination. Now, just like Matt said before me, we have to spend money, and just, we have to do our upkeep. upkeep now, just like a neighborhood. There are some people that mow their yards better than other people. Some people keep their garages better looking than others. But as a neighborhood, we have to keep our, do our discipline within ourselves to make it look better. Now, what we're asking is that the proper allocation be made for the monies for you to do the same thing. And I'm definitely not saying that Madera Beach City has not done anything from, for the John's Pass Village. But I think we want, continue wanting to grow, we want it to grow, and there's a lot of expenses on a daily, weekly, and then the capital expenses that we need to continue to go after. We don't always feel we have a nice voice, and just what Matt said, there's a lot of turnover in your positions, and that's just the way it is. And as a business owner and a property owner, I want to have some type of voice in that so we can marry in these things, and we can get these things on paper, so it's just not pushed aside, well, we'll do this, this, and if we have money left over, we're going to invest in John's Pass. So John's Pass is very important for me, and very important for the whole entire community, and we have to not only look at the short term, we have to look, look at the long-term expenditures and capital budgets. I really do appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Does anyone else wish to speak?
Good evening, Doreen Moore, 13019 Boca Seega Avenue and 13030 Gulf Boulevard. And Debbie, thank you for reminding me that when I was a sitting commissioner in 2002, we did make those plans for improvements in John's Pass. And as a business owner and a staunch supporter of John's Pass, and the history that goes behind all that, I think that, that my comment to you all as a commissioner, commissioners are that you, you've got a tough task ahead. You're reorganizing, you're looking at your budgets, you're trying to make conscious decisions. And the needs in John's Pass, just like many of the needs in the other parts of the city, I fully appreciate what the merchants are saying. But there was a time when our city did have a dedicated fund, and there were monies that were put into John's Pass, and it was specifically earmarked to take care of those things. That fund went away several years ago. So you're in the mode of recovering, I'm hearing the city manager say, that, that working with the merchants, working with the, the property owners there, there needs to be a conscientious plan on what needs to be done. And definitely, there are things that need to be done, but you're in cleanup mode. And so waiting a week to hear about a budget item, to, to get your arms around that, I, I'm not hearing you say that you're going to give John's Pass the leftovers. I, I think you all are making a conscious effort. I'm hearing Commissioner Weinstein, who lives there, say, making a conscious effort to really get your arms around this and make John's Pass again something that everyone can be proud of. It is, it is a jewel of our beaches, and, and it's very important, but you also have a whole city to think about, and it, it's not going to be the leftovers that's there for, for John's Pass. So thank you for your consideration on that.
I'm Tom Powers, a business owner at 12945 Village Boulevard. Since I was up here before, I've talked with four of the commissioners face to face, and I really appreciate, you know, you taking the time to do that and caring enough about us, the four who did talk to us and being considered enough. You know, I'm probably going to be somewhat redundant because I've been there a long time. You know, there was a point in time when the state owned that strip through there and, and generated the traffic through there, and when it moved, that 100-foot strip through the, from the center was given to the city. We all had parking then, we had parking when it was given to the city. As time come along, the city put the meters in, and they promised that the revenue from the meters would go to John's Pass Village, and for the upkeep and the things that needed to be done there. And that never has happened. It got to be where maybe it was put in a fund for a while, and then it, then it got taken away. If it's not put in a fund separate, it gets taken away because there's other things, there's meters, you know, there's, there's the generator for the building, the other things that people consider more important. But as business people, we, we work every day hard to pull traffic in there for our businesses, which feeds the meters. Most of the revenue from the meters, as you'll, from Jonathan's report, shows you that comes from the village, and there should be a decent portion of that go back to us. The meters keep raising, the city keeps taking the money, but it doesn't come back to us. I feel like I'm sitting here, and you may not like what I'm going to say, but I feel like I'm sitting here watching a group of people that went to the buffet, buffet being the meters, the taxes. And they got to the buffet, and they got full. And when they got full, they looked back and said, well, I've already paid for the buffet, let's have another helping. And when they had another helping, and I'm talking about that's raising the parking meters, when they raised the parking meters, they raised the parking meters, they got up and left, and never even tipped the staff that worked on them. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Charlotte Hunter, and I'm the owner of Wild Time Caribbean in John's Pass. I'm a working operator out there, so I'm out there working the store. And I can tell you that I get so many people that come in and they're already complaining about the meters. First of all, that they don't work the majority of the time, and the cost of them. And so to increase it, I can tell you, you're going to have a lot of unhappy people. So I, I, I went to the meeting that I want to thank Nancy Hodges and, and the city manager for having, and I took the time to go out there and voice my opinion about that, and, and I'm a strong believer in that there shouldn't be an increase, but if there is going to be an increase, I'm also a strong believer that that money needs to go back to the pass in some form. And, and I don't think we should get shortsighted in the 25 cents of the 50 cent increase as much as we should in preparing a budget, which I, my former job I was very involved in. We need to maybe think of line items to put in that budget to put towards John's Pass and not get shortsighted in the 25 cent part of the 50 cent increase. Because I think that it's a great place, it's a destination place. I get a lot, a lot of people that come there and say they, they stay in Madera Beach, and they spend every day and evening in John's Pass, and that's what they're coming there for. They're also coming there for our beaches, but they really enjoy John's Pass, and it really is a destination place. And I think we need to make it the best that we can, and make it a place that people enjoy coming to. And I'd also like to, in, and I, I expressed this to Jonathan, I think that as part of the, I might be using the wrong word, the resolution or the ordinance, that maybe we, the board should consider maybe not charging on our down times of the year in the evenings because a lot of restaurants in the beaches, they have their own parking lots, and they, they don't have, the customers can either not pay to have a meal. Where in John's Pass, for Matt's Pub or the ice cream shop right next to me, people have to pay to park just to go and have an ice cream cone or enjoy a nice meal in the pass. So I would like to take this opportunity too, to maybe have that be something you think about, that, you know, certain times of the year or certain times of the day, maybe waive the, the, the parking, you know? So it gives people an opportunity, and gives locals an opportunity to come out and enjoy the pass without paying. So that's, that's it. Thank you for your time.
Anybody else wish to speak?
Hi, I'm Jim Hunter. I'm with Wild Time Caribbean also. I just don't understand how.
We need your home address.
12932 Village Boulevard, sorry.
Well, that's not your home address, is it?
No, that's the store that we own, Wild Time Caribbean, John's Pass.
I understand, but normally we ask for your name and home address.
Okay, I'm sorry. Jim Hunter, I, I thought I said all that.
No, that's your store, not your home.
Okay. My home address is 9963 Ashley Drive, San Antonio, Florida.
Thanks.
I, I just, I'm, I'm a little confused how you've got $400 and some thousand dollars for BP settlement, and you're not comfortable releasing $125,000 and earmark it to John's Pass. John's Pass brings in 40% of your parking revenue, and you, you, you can't bring it upon yourselves to do 25% or 12 and a half percent, or earmark anything for John's Pass. It's, it's, it's the goose with the golden egg, I guess. It's, you wouldn't have gotten the BP, that amount of BP money without John's Pass, and you can't get 40% of your revenue without John's Pass. It's, it's confusing. And if, if you've got to have all kinds of meetings to do that, you'll never get anything done, and we, we need to get it set aside. Thank you.
Anyone else? Public comment is now closed on this item. Any more discussion from the board? Do we have a first and a second? Okay. I got a little lost on that. All right, will the city clerk please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Weinstein.
The resolution. And yes.
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
No.
Commissioner Douthur?
Yes.
Mayor Blaine?
Yes. Next, we have the long-term parking variance to allow Madera Beach LLC Sam Lewis to lease the 134th Avenue East parking lot. Director Pierce?
Madam Mayor and Commissioners, staff recommends approval of the attached one-year sole access lease for the parking lot located at 134th Avenue East. The purpose of this agreement between the City of Madera Beach and Madera Beach Marina LLC Sam Lewis is, is to ready the loss of parking created by the construction activities on the existing parking area of the Mad Beach Fish House. On April 10th, 2018, the Board of County Comis-, the Board of Commissioners gave the city manager the authority to negotiate a short-term agreement to lease the parking lot until a long-term agreement, which we're presenting tonight, could be negotiated and brought back for, to the Board of City Commissioners for approval. The, so the, the proposed long-term agreement is one year. It would start July 1st, 2018, through June 30th, 2019. The short-term agreement that we currently have is through the end of this month. And we wanted to be clean with having one clean, one, one clear year. The total in cost, financial impact to this total agreement is $7,544. This will cover all of the projected revenues that the city would generate during, that would have generated during this 12-month period. It includes the 50 cent parking fee increase that you approved this evening in the fee ordinance, and it also includes $100 per month addition to the fee, which the city pays to lease that property from ACB Leasing and Company. They've also signed off on this annual, this long-term agreement. So with that, if there's any questions that the commission may have, staff recommends approving. Also, I would like to say that Amy Powell is here to, in representing Sam Lewis.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Board of Commission. I'm Amy Powell. I live at 15320 Harbor Drive.
Could you pull the microphone?
No, sorry.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Did you hear it?
Well, it's for the people at home.
Can you get it closer?
My goodness, who knew I was so shy? Okay, I said, good evening, Madam Mayor and Board of Commission. And my name is Amy Powell. I live at 15320 Harbor Drive, and I am the owner of Mad Beach Fish House. As stated, this would be for valet services for the customers. We have been down with the over six weeks on parking, and we've seen measurable impact. The reason that we want to go long-term is to make the contract with the valet service. The objective, obviously, is to maintain the customer base while decreasing the impact to the employees of Mad Beach Fish House, which 25% of those employees live in Madera Beach.
I've got a couple of questions for you. Number one, what happens if you're not, the construction is not finished in a year?
I think at that point, we would come back and see if we could extend it. Obviously, we would try to work with the city and continue that. If you look at the timing, that would be going into a down season where financially it's probably not utilized as much, so we would continue the request. Certainly, we're going by the information that we know at this time.
And second question is, after they build those condos there, you're not going to have that parking anywhere.
I am. The lower level will be a covered parking, and it'll be utilized for the restaurant as well as the marina.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any more discussion?
Um, yes, Mayor, I would like to ask just one question. It says here, it says on the agreement that Sam Lewis will obtain insurance in the amount of $500,000 in name of the city as co-insured on the insurance policy. And I would just like to ask that before we sign that agreement with Mr. Lewis, that we have a copy of that face page of that insurance policy. Is that satisfactory?
Yes.
Okay. And then I would like to ask one other question, too. The, the sign, that, the sign in front of that lot right now that says City of Madera Beach, are we going to take that sign down? Would that be appropriate, or?
We have talked about taking that sign down as well as covering the parking meter.
Right, yeah, it says it's covered. Okay, thank you.
And we did purchase a cover that will completely cover that meter.
The meter, okay. It would just keep other public, yeah, people away. Okay, if we take the sign down. Thank you.
Any more discussion?
I'd just like to make a motion that we pass the long-term parking variance to allow for the Madera Beach LLC Sam Lewis to lease the 134th Avenue East parking lot.
Second.
Upon getting the insurance.
Second.
Sorry about that.
I'm a stickler.
Sorry.
I fell asleep.
Any more discussion? Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Public comment?
Pardon me?
No public comment, or we already did that?
Oh, no, we didn't. And is there any public comment on this item? Public comment is, my clerk now calls. Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Yes. Commissioner Douthur?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Weinstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Mayor Blaine?
Yes. Next item on the agenda is the, oh, no, we did that one, is under New Business Resolution 2018-06, the refinancing and the closing of the Series 2014 bond.
Hey, Madam Mayor, I'm going to be, I'm going to ask the clerk to read the resolution.
Resolution 2018-06, a resolution of the City of Madera Beach, Florida, authorizing the issuance of a capital improvement funding revenue bond, Series 2018 of the city, in the principal amount of not to exceed $1,297,000 to currently refund its outstanding inter-local payments revenue bond, Series 2014, and paying associated transactional costs, providing that the bond shall be limited obligation of the city payable providing that the bond shall be limited obligation of the city payable from non-add valorem revenues budgeted, appropriated, and deposited as provided herein, providing for the rights, securities, and remedies for the owner of the bond, making such determinations as are required to afford such bond bank-qualified status, making certain covenants and agreements in connection therewith, and providing for an effective date.
Madam Mayor and Commissioners, just a brief summary, and we've heard this a couple of times. The city is facing a $1.2 million payment with a final maturity date of November 1st, 2018, on this 2000 Series bond. The purpose of this loan was to finance the undergrounding of city utilities on Gulf Boulevard. When we were looking at this payment, we asked our financial advisor, Nicholas Roca, from PFM Financial Advisors, to give us some options on this. And we looked at two-year extension, the three-year extension, and both had the same interest rate. The three-year extension gave us a little less payment to make. And basically, the goal here with this extension is to allow the city, over time, over the next two years, to receive reimbursement while the project for the undergrounding proceeds, and as we get the reimbursement from the Penney F. Pinellas as it relates to the cost of this undergrounding Phase II project. So basically, I just see this as a timing issue, and we've talked about this before. One good thing, and Nick can make this clear if he wants to, again, we can pay this off at any time. And as, as the years go forward, that penalty becomes less, but it's basically, right now, about $2,000, and becomes less as the years go forward. So if the commission and man, if the staff recommends in a year or two that we pay this off and we're able to do it, then it would be a very minimal expense.
Madam Mayor, Commissioners, as Walt stated, well, I'm Nicholas Roca with PFM, the city's financial advisor. And as Walt stated, the loan would have the option that the city could prepay it at any time for a pretty minor fee. The max it would ever be is about $2,600, and that fee goes down as principal is paid off. And as Walt stated, this is basically taking, you had a one payment due here on November 1st, 2018, and it's kind of breaking it out into four smaller payments, extending it out for years.
You know, I'd like to just make one more, one comment as we talk about the budget, which we're going to talk about in the next couple of days. As I am tasked with balancing the budget, as difficult as that is, it's easier to balance looking at a payment of $344,000 instead of a $1.2 million payment.
Any questions from the board?
No, I'd just like to thank the city manager for helping us all walk through this. And I'd also like to thank the Budget Review Committee.
Thank you, Nick.
Who, that, several times, to discuss this item. Thank you.
I'll now open the floor for public comment on this item. Doesn't necessarily. The floor is now closed. We can entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion that we approve Resolution 2018-06, refinancing and closing approval, Series 2014 bond.
I'll second.
Any more board discussion, or staff? Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Commissioner Douthur?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Weinstein?
Yes.
Mayor Blak?
Yes.
Next, we have two, ordinance 2018-05. Linda Portal?
Do you want to read the ordinance?
Ordinance 2018-05, amendment to Part II, Code of Ordinances, Chapter 110, zoning, Article II, site plans, Division II, review procedures, creating Section 110-50, designating site plan review categories and separate review processes, and adding hearing requirements, amending Section 110-51, scope of review, and Division III, plan requirements, Section 110-71, submission contents for consistency.
Any discussion from the board?
Madam Mayor, Commissioners, I would, I have a presentation, but at the moment, the system's not working for me. Try one more time. I think it should do it. There we go. My apologies. You wanted me to choose a new nickname. I know that you've had an opportunity to look at the petition or the ordinance language. This is something that we've been talking about for a while, is developing a site plan review process for the city. Currently, all site plans are handled, no matter what their size, by the staff. Also, the fees and the breakdown for what type of review the staff implemented was based on whether they residential or commercial, and had no bearing on the real impact of the development, how large it was, for instance. What I'm proposing here, and that the Plan Board is, or Planning Commission, excuse me, has proposed, is to develop a series, or a sequence, levels of review, and to assign different review criteria to those, and procedures for those, to ensure that there's public input for large developments, and just generally improve the community's opportunity to make input. The Planning Commission did go over this in great detail, trying to decide exactly where to make the breakdowns between types of uses. We have a proposal to show development residential is either minor, intermediate, or major, and specify what criteria constitutes each of those categories. And then a separate set of criteria for non-residential. And then also, those dealing with just parking or construction, site-type construction, that doesn't result in what we'd normally consider a building, but still alters the area in some way or another. And the reason these are important, if we can get this to move on, is that, oops. The levels of development include components within different thresholds, as I've said, with the highest, having implications for different kinds of hearings. The changes that are in your code show designation of what a technical review committee, that is, the staff review. And when those, of course, the technical review is required for all developments, no matter what site or size they are. But some are important enough that they would require a public hearing, either with the Planning Commission or with the magistrate, depending on what type of change was being requested. And some are large enough that they would require both a public hearing and a separate neighborhood workshop to get input before they come to the Planning Commission for review. It's much better to get the neighbors' input, obviously, before the design is completed. And you have that procedure you've used for planned developments. But it really should also be put in place for large developments that are already approved by zoning, but still are going to have major impact. So some places, the Planning Commissions felt, they changed things a little bit in the breakdowns, because there were some they thought should, should go to a, a planning commission hearing, but not necessarily require a neighborhood meeting, because they didn't want to be too heavy-handed with how much review was required for kind of intermediate-type developments. There's, so the review criteria has, requires that the plan meets substantial requirements of the land development code. It includes the payment of fees and complies with the submittal schedule to provide adequate notice and review. All of these things are going to be covered by the review criteria section. The proposed development's consistent with the comprehensive plan. It has to comply with the comp plan, the land development code, and other applicable regulations. Section 11049 gives procedures for the review, has a pre-application meeting with the staff to make sure that, we've been setting that up anyway, anybody who comes in meets with the staff, and we're trying to consolidate so that they can meet with all of the review staff in one spot ahead of time, so we can tell them what we will be expecting from the city, and make sure that the plans they bring in are more complete. They get the comments back from the staff for their first technical review committee meeting, and then make changes, and then bring those back for a final review before it even gets to any kind of board, if it's, or committee meeting, if it's a large development. Also, with the review procedures, there are areas where the board review is not required. The technical committee can review the application in accordance with the review criteria, just as we have always done, and then also issue conclusions supporting the committee's findings, so it's on record. They find, they have to find all the requirements have been met for the code, and to, in order to issue a final development order, find that all the requirements have been met with conditions, or they can deny an application. And then there would be an appeal process. So in each of these cases, either the technical review committee, if they're the final review, or the magistrate, or the planning commission, if whoever's final review can either approve, approve with conditions, or deny an application. And same with the magistrate. In some cases, you'd notice on the chart that you'd seen that if, the only time it would go to the magistrate is if it were, a variance was included. Sometimes, they may have to have both the planning commission and magistrate meeting if they're asking for a variance. So I'm going to go through these quickly, because you have a really long agenda tonight. We do have the ability to offer a preliminary or conditional development work order, or development order for, we can give them partial order to do just site work. We sometimes do that in any case, and can hold it up or specify under what conditions they would be able to move forward. A preliminary development order is not your final development order. They would have to come back and meet all of the conditions in order to get a final development order and complete the development. But even the fin, even a preliminary requires that they've met concurrency requirements, that they show that whatever their impact is going to be can be met at the time of the impact is created. Any preliminary or conditional development order is effective for six months, with the possibility of extensions, of an extension of six months. This is pretty standard, because you don't want people getting a site plan approval and just hanging on to it for years and years, and not developing, and then coming back after circumstances have changed, and your road impacts are different, or your fee schedule's different, and then expecting to be able to develop. A final development order would require a certificate, a final of concurrency. So all of this is spelled out in the code, specifically what would be required for, to obtain each section or level of review, what process we will be using to review it, how we will involve the public in the public hearing, making sure that everything is noticed. There's procedures in here for the amendment of development orders, requiring them to go back through the process. Now, all of this is actually additional material in your code, because you don't have any of these procedures now. And so what I've done is propose it be added on to the front of the site plan section. The back part of that, you'll notice in the ordinance doesn't, only has a couple of changes needed for definitions. We will, at some point, come back to you with amendments for that once we've gotten further into amending the code. At this point, this is really important for us to establish, because we have a new fee process that allows us to charge various levels of fees based on how large the development is. But we had no procedures in place for reviewing those. There's just nothing in the code at all, dealing with this level of, the breakdown of development, or involving the public in public hearing processes. I know, I know some of you have had questions, and have gotten with me ahead of time. If there's any more questions, comments from the commission?
Have we, have we established, excuse me, an impact fee chart yet?
We haven't done the impact fee ordinance yet, no.
Where are we at on that? Closed, or?
I'm not sure where we are with it, to tell you the truth. We were, we were waiting for, I think, review input from outside legal source, and Ralph was also reviewing it.
With, with the impact, impact fees, what we're most likely going to have to do, because we discussed the possibility of securing some services from an academic institution in partnership. But before you levy any type of impact fee, you effectively have to go through a study to do that. So that may be something that we look to do as part of the fiscal year 2019 budget, because the cost for those studies could be anywhere between $30,000 to $50,000, depending on the depth of analysis, the last time we did impact fees, et cetera. So that's something that we're going to end up discussing with the board with regards to our impact fees, and how we're effectively going to fund that.
But you're saying $30,000 to $50,000, but sometimes the costs that the city will incur because of not having impact fees could be well above that. Am I correct?
Yeah, yeah. The, the impact fees, the statute is explicit with respect to the impact fees. So any development that comes into the community, the revenue generated from that impact would go to improve some of your local roadways, your intersections, your sidewalks, those types of things, to make the impact as minimal to the surrounding areas. So it is a major opportunity for the city to collect the, the revenue or the funds associated with what impacts are. So yeah, absolutely, it is something that is long overdue for us as a city, and it's something that's a priority for us moving forward.
Thank you.
May I make a comment? Yes, I would just like to say that, thank you, Linda, for your due diligence on this, because I just couldn't believe when I, well, I guess I could believe, but when I looked at pages five, six, and seven, which was the existing, which was all we had, I thought, well, what predicate, you know, what gives you the guidelines to do whatever you're doing in five, six, and seven? When you look at the old codes, okay? And so now you've made it quite clear exactly the guidelines that we're supposed to be using, and the instructions, and the purposes of it, I guess. Yeah, thank you.
I think it's important to note, under the existing code, that you have no public hearing for a site plan review. What this ordinance does is create public hearings for, for major, what we're calling major developments here. Then the major definition of major development is in Table 32. So developments of 13 or more residential units, new construction or expansion over 2,001 square feet of non-residential, and then new parking areas that are more than 21 new parking spaces. So generally, those are the things that you would now have public hearings on that wouldn't be simply approved by staff administratively without having a public hearing.
Any more discussion from the commission?
That's on page one and two, that table.
Right, on the table.
And the Planning Commission discussed that, and they adjusted those numbers slightly to, to capture more.
to, to capture more public hearings.
It's so important, I just don't know how it would have done anything without those first four pages, really, I mean...
Yeah, it was just done by staff before there was no public hearings, so...
Okay, thank you.
Floor is now open for public comment. Floor is now closed, any more discussion?
I'll do the motion. May I make a motion to approve ordinance 2018-05, establishing categories of review and hearing process for site plans first reading?
A second.
Any more discussion? Will the city clerk please call the wall?
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Weinstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Dowther?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes.
I'd like now to ask if we would like to power through with the rest of the agenda or take a break?
Take five.
Take five?
Take five.
All right, let's take five.
Thank you.
Adding a section for prohibited on-street parking, providing for definitions, providing signage requirements, and providing for penalty and enforcement.
Madam Mayor, Commissioners, some time ago, the Sheriff's Officers who provide code enforcement and parking enforcement for us made the point that they were having difficulty, or in fact, it was impossible, to enforce the existing parking code because we didn't have an ordinance that actually empowered them to do that. We didn't specify how we would collect fees or what authority the city had established to enforce parking. So, that kicked off the need for making at least a minor change to the existing parking code. When I went through the code, I realized that it was extremely outdated and that, in fact, it didn't really provide much definition to anything or authority for any of the things we needed to do with as much change as we have from one event or circumstance or season to another with parking enforcement. So, I undertook review of the entire code, looked at example ordinances from all around the Tampa Bay area, knowing that some of these cities have really hammered out all the legal issues associated with parking because they have a lot of parking pressures, just like we do. And so, have come back to you with a long list of changes and additional language, dealing with all of the eventualities that we could think of. And, let me see if I can bring a list up quickly, and we'll flip through these quickly. It now has new sections that allow us to prohibit parking at all times in certain specified places, including, although I know we don't have one, you never know, in front of theater entrances, in front of entrances to hotels, other places where parking is prohibited for public safety reasons, and it gives the city the ability to decide where those situations will be. And as long as we provide the appropriate signage and that the sign references the ordinance, then the city has the ability to enforce and to impose fees or fines for violations. The, it deals with parking, that you have to park so as not to obstruct traffic. We didn't have anything that specified how much of the roadway you could leave your vehicle on, or where there are situations you just shouldn't stop in front of, for instance, establish curbs, curb cuts, or loading zones, or anything of that nature. It deals with stopping, standing, parking in alleyways. In some cases, roadways and alleyways may be too narrow to let people just stop long-term, and so it allows for loading and unloading, but encourages people to keep moving if they're in these locations, and never to block a driveway or an entrance. Parking for certain purposes is prohibited. You shouldn't be doing car repair out in the road with, other than emergency repairs, of course. It shouldn't be, I can see that there's an issue on your slide there with numbering, but it deals with displaying or using a vehicle as an advertisement out on the street. You shouldn't be selling, driving around selling things out of the vehicle and stopping and parking for that purpose. That it's not, the street is not intended as a storage place for vehicles that are abandoned or left derelict, and that we shouldn't be using parking for soliciting for goods, whereas merchandise and other such things. We already have some of that in other places in the code that doesn't allow for mobile vending, but this is something that many of the other cities have done in regards to parking as well. Parking on narrow streets and avenues gives a width that's acceptable, and the purpose in that is it allows the city to go out and put signs in areas where we think it's too narrow for parking, to prohibit that. One-way streets, most places have prohibitions on parking on the left side of a one-way street because it blocks too much of the roadway on the side that people are supposed to be driving. Stopping, standing, parking near hazardous or congested areas, that's something that we could establish on a case-by-case basis or temporarily during events and things like that. So, this gives us the ability to decide as a city where those areas are. And then there are generally areas that are restricted parking zones and loading zones, and it deals with things like taxi cabs and Uber drivers and temporary and quick loading and unloading, and allows for that sort of thing, but specifies in the manner it should be handled, and allows, again, it allows the city to put signs up if there are specific places that we don't want that activity to occur. Then there's designations of streets for parking where it's prohibited at any time. Sometimes, local governments decide that there are certain residential areas that they don't allow on-street parking because of the width of the streets. In other places, you actually want to encourage on-street parking because it keeps the traffic at a reasonable speed, but that's, this gives us the ability to decide that. Designation of streets where it's prohibited just during certain hours, all of this has to be spelled out in the code if you anticipate ever making decisions based on these criteria. So, essentially, what I've done is just list out all the criteria that you might use at some point to prohibit or restrict parking in some way, so that you can cite the code if you decide to do that. Limited parking where signs are officially posted, that allows you to put up the signs, and I know this seems like an overkill, but you actually have to specify in the code that you are allowed to do all these things. First, that you're allowed to prohibit or restrict parking, and then that you're allowed to put up signs and what the signs mean, and that you can levy fees and fines. All that had to be spelled out. It also specifies temporary parking. If you have a parking that you're allowed for two hours, for instance, moving your car down the street a few feet is not constitute, does not constitute a separate parking event. You're not allowed to just roll it down a few feet and extend your one-hour parking or two-hour parking. They have observance of more restrictive requirements when they are necessary for public safety, and then generally enforcement, that the citations in a form approved by the designated law enforcement agency for violations of division may be issued by both law enforcement and properly qualified parking enforcement officers of the city in case the city designates other people to help with parking enforcement. And there is other things in here that allow for public works to post signs and to make those kind of decisions, special events. And then it establishes the ability to enforce penalties. And that's the quick run-through of all the changes. Are there any questions?
I have two questions. I'll maybe a few more after that. But I would just like to identify two different areas, okay, and I did discuss it with you, and then I forgot to bring up these two items, okay? But one of them is an area that I can identify, and I know that we've had lots of problems with this particular area. It's on Pelican Lane, 131st and 129th. And currently, and currently, I know that you're not able to give tickets from the area of the street to a chain link fence, which then identifies a property. These cars are always hanging out into Pelican Lane, sometimes as much as five or six feet. I mean, you can't even get mine sometime. So, what I'm curious, I guess, is this does allow code enforcement to give tickets, but then do we have to, will code enforcement or will the city then post signs saying what ordinance it is that you can't park there and then give tickets, or they just, yeah, how will?
Yes, according to this, you really should post signs in order to notify people that parking's not allowed. It would be very difficult or impossible to enforce legally if there was no warning.
Okay, but they don't have to be, but you don't have anything that says they have to be, each sign has to be 15 feet from the other sign?
No.
Something like that. So, you can have conceivably four or five different signs. Okay. And then the other question I have is that, for instance, on my street, 129th, years and years ago, we had signs put up that said, "No parking on pavement," okay? And they're still there. A bit rusty, but they're still there. And of course, most people, I mean, we have buses that come down that street and just park there from lots of different nursing homes or centers or whatever for tourism in John's Pass Village. So, I guess my question is, is on 129th, then, also, would you need to have new signs, new signs made up that identify the ordinance by which these buses, you sit there for two or three hours because, you know, they're waiting for the passengers, and they don't have, or they can't, they don't want to pay parking is what they don't want to do. You know, there might be parking available. So, will that help the situation? That will, that's the reason for this?
Yes, I'd like Officer Roxby to address that because they're dealing with it every day.
Yeah, that was one of the issues with 129th. There's a lot of people that park on the street even with the signs posted. But when we went, the parking people came with the new handheld machines for the parking enforcement, and we were putting in the different ordinances, and we realized there wasn't one that actually gave us the authority to do that. So, that's why we, so the one that, the one ordinance that says unless it's posted, you can park there, that's the one that we'll use. But that, and then 145th, that one has signs posted that didn't have an ordinance with it. The Bula has really bad parking there on the street, and that's really narrow, and people park all over the place. And there's a sign there that says you can't park on the pavement, but technically there wasn't anything until this ordinance.
Well, also, how will people, how will our vendors, our various vendors that deliver to the village restaurants and the village, John's Pass Village property owners, okay, the big lady with the 18-wheeler shell truck, okay, if she parks there, or she parks on a narrow alleyway, okay, for more than a certain period of time, then that person will be?
I think you covered that.
Yeah, the parking, this ordinance does provide for the need for loading and unloading and gives a, yeah, a longer period of time for that purpose. You don't, you don't want people just leaving large trucks sitting right out in the middle of the road long-term, and that's sometimes a problem. They may still need to move people to a more reasonable loading location. But alleyways are seen as there specifically for that type of activity for loading, unloading, and service.
Okay, I understand, because I know on that Fisherman's App, Fisherman's Island, that's right, the Cisco trucks and the bloodwashing trucks, they're there, and it's not at 7:30 or 8:00 in the morning. It's 11:30 or 1 o'clock in the afternoon, you know, and they're there for a long time, and nobody's around. You know, I know that they're waiting perhaps to unload, but I just, you know, need to.
And they back in. They back in, and they're going the wrong way because it's a one-way.
I can't imagine so many comments out here. Thank you.
I have one question. It said for the officers to give tickets, but it also said for city employees, like the person that we have now that goes around and gives parking tickets at John's Pass, are they also, will they also be giving tickets on, in these incidences?
They can. You can't, we can designate other people.
Yeah. The parking officials can do it, not only in the city lots, but also in the residential areas.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more?
Public comment?
Yes. Floor is now open for public comment. Floor is closed for public comment. Any more discussion from the staff or commission?
I make a motion that we pass ordinance 2018-06, updating the parking code, first reading.
I second.
Any more discussion? Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Weinstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Dowther?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes. Next, we have ordinance 2018-07.
Ordinance 2018-07, proposed amendment to Part II, Code of Ordinances, Chapter 110, Zoning, Article 5, Districts, Division 3, R2, Low Density, Multi-Family Residential, Section 110-206, Setback Requirements, Amendment to Reduce Setback Requirements for Townhouses to Reflect Consistency with Other Uses in the Permitted District.
Madam Mayor, Commissioners, we've had numerous requests for looks at this particular section of the code because, for some reason, the side setback for townhouses, which you will find on page three of the ordinance in front of you, it's a very small cross-out section. It requires 15 feet between rowhouse buildings, but it also requires 25 feet of setback on each side of the property. And it becomes absolutely impossible to finance such a thing if you're leaving 50 feet of open space on the side yards, and it's so distinctly larger than what we typically require for side setbacks, that I'm proposing that it have a similar setback to that required for the triplex. So, as it stands right now, if you come in with a townhouse and you have four units in the building, which is usually what we get, because we don't, we have very small lots, and you can accumulate very many lots, that for four units, you have 25 feet of setback on each side of the lot, but for three units, you have nine feet of setback on each side of the lot. I am suggesting, and the plan board, planning commission agreed, that people who live in townhouses are not so much more dangerous or offensive as to require three, almost three times as much setback on each side of the property. So, we're trying to make it a little bit more consistent with what we typically require. I'm actually looking at it thinking that as with the single-family large lots above, that when that 25 went in, it was meant to be 25 separated or divided, 25 total with no less than 12 footer on one side. That's what we typically see throughout the code. That is the only change in this proposed ordinance.
How'd you come up with nine feet?
Nine is what's used for the triplexes immediately above it. So, it was something you already had in the code.
So, each dwelling's got to be 3,000 square feet?
What, the way that reads, we have to have 3,000 square feet of lot area for each dwelling that's approved.
Okay.
At some point, you know, we'll look at that to make sure that's working the way you want it to as well, because it's kind of difficult sometimes to come up with that all around town, as small as the lots are. We have to explore that, I think, more carefully before you start making dramatic changes to how you, what, because it affects your density.
On page, first page, down to last paragraph, it says, "Prohibited use shall include or not limited to short-term rentals of a three-month period." My question is, by Pinellas County, if they're there less than six months and one day, they've got to pay taxes for the rental. If, so if they're doing it three months, how are we enforcing the taxes and stuff like that? I don't know, so.
Are they talking property tax?
No. You pay, if you go in and you rent my place for three months, whatever the cost is, you have to pay tax from that to the county. On my rental properties, I had to do all of that. Every time someone rented for less than six months, I had to pay a tax, like going in and buying something.
Seven percent?
Yeah. You know, how do we enforce this? I guess, well, can we enforce it? Or, you know, I don't have an answer. I'm just questioning.
From, from a, I know this is going to sound odd, but from a regulatory standpoint, there's nothing we can do. The statute requires the individual to remit payment to the Department of Revenue. So, that is the onus and the responsibilities on that particular individual. So, from a, how do we monitor and police that and regulate that? It's really that individual, it's on the honor system realistically when it comes to that situation. So, I hope that anyone out there listening remits, remits payment to the Department of Revenue.
Is honorable.
Yes.
Right.
They're on the honor roll, yes. Thank you.
The floor is open now for public comment. Floor is closed for public comment. Any more discussion from the commission?
No, but I make move, oh, do I say that now, Claire, or do you have to say, no, you've already read it. I know that we accept approved ordinance 2018-07, Proposed Amendment to Part II, Code of Ordinances, Chapter 10, et cetera, et cetera, effective immediately.
I'll second.
Oh, wait a minute, this is, no, 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 this is, this is the first reading. Yeah, so.
We appreciate the support, Matt. Appreciate it.
I'll second.
Thank you.
I just have one question. This ordinance, is this an ordinance? Yes. This ordinance and the prior to ordinances, under the fiscal impact, all have the same statement. Is that because it's a sort of a boilerplate thing, or shouldn't they all have different fiscal impacts?
We really wouldn't know, because I don't, I don't know how much additional development this might generate and whether that'll bring in additional fees.
So, it's just a guess, and each one will be about the same? Maybe, or maybe not, but we don't know.
Right. Any, any ability to better enforce parking, of course, is going to increase revenue. At the same time, putting up signs is going to cost something. So, not knowing what the signs cost, how many of the city's going to decide to put, and where they're going to put them, it was really impossible to generate any fee costs with that.
Madam Mayor, one of the things that we're going to be doing, consistent with what Commissioner Oakley has stated previously, is putting out a fact sheet as it relates to some of these items, whether it's parking modifications, changes, those types of things. And that was one of the factors that really spoke highly to us when we were having the interviews with the individual for the public information specialists that is having experience in Sarasota County, putting out those fact sheets, keeping it to a page, and communicating directly to the public effectively what some of the public policy that the board enacts does. And so, this is one of those things that we will communicate some additional information out to the public and, you know, the education component. So, there is costs, of course, associated with the signage, like the department director said, but also on the other side, there's revenue associated with the issuance of citations or tickets or what have you. So, it's realistically, the fiscal impact should have been, you know, at this particular moment, it's too early to project what the, what the impact would be, so.
All right. Any more discussion from the commission? City clerk, will you please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Weinstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Commissioner Dowther?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes. Next on the agenda, we have the appointment to the Tampa Regional Planning Council. Director Portell?
Madam Mayor, Commissioners, the city of Madera Beach has long been a member of the Regional Planning Council, and we pay a membership fee in order to have voting rights with the council. Over the years, the responsibilities for the Regional Planning Council have changed quite substantially. They do not become involved in as many development issues as they used to, but the purpose is to allow all governments, in particular the smaller ones, the opportunity to make input when the larger governments are making decisions that impact them. For instance, the city of St. Petersburg may approve a large development right along the roadway that, that ends up hindering traffic and circulation into or out of the city of Madera Beach. Seminole may do something large that impacts the way traffic moves in and out of the area. They may actually approve things that take up all the remaining capacity on a road, keeping you from developing as you intended. So, it's really important that everybody has an opportunity to make input when something big is happening around them, especially when we're so close to each other. They also serve as the hurricane preparedness center for the area. So, many of the emergency management concerns that the city has, especially because we're in a very vulnerable position here, are addressed in terms of evacuation procedures and routes, and we would have an opportunity to weigh in our concerns about those sort of things, help get information out about evacuation and project impacts for hurricane impacts. They've been, over the years, also done a lot of studies in being there and requesting studies being done on issues that impact the whole region is an important opportunity as well. So, what's required is that as a member, you would send one of the elected commission members to sit as your representative. I know it's a lot of extra material to cover potentially. They have a meeting once a month on a Monday morning, and so a part of the package that we talked about, getting someone pointed, was that they get staff. I will help review all of the package materials and attend the meeting with the commissioner to make sure that they're up to date on what's going on and provide any explanation and support that's needed.
Now, doesn't that sound like a good deal?
Get free cookies.
We're excited.
All right, well, is there a commissioner who would like to do this?
Terry Lester was doing it, wasn't he?
Yes, he was previously the designated.
That district four, yeah.
Yeah, I'll volunteer.
Thank you. Pointed.
Because Linda Wolf acts as a.
Yeah, she would, she would, yeah, she'll be the staff liaison.
Okay.
Do we vote on this?
Yes. I think you have to take official action to appoint, yes.
Okay.
I make a motion that we point Debbie Weinstein to the Tampa Regional Planning Council.
Second.
Third.
Commissioner Hodges can be my alternate.
No.
The meeting's now open for public comment. Would you like to abstain, just for the rest of everything? We're closed for public comment. Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Yes.
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Dowther?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Weinstein?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes.
I have a suggestion, because it's, it is late.
Yes.
And Daryl's not here to go over the emergency operation. Oh, I didn't see you were hiding back there. Okay, let's keep that one on.
He's been waiting.
But the next one, the city's vision, because that's long.
Yeah, that will be long.
That'll be real long. The parcel ID thing, we can go through real quick, and I think we should put the planning coordinator off for a while to figure out where we're going to come with that. And then all the staff reports, because nobody's here to do the staff reports. None of these people are.
Madam Mayor, the staff is all still here. They're just in the bullpen back there. But if it is the pleasure of the board, I can certainly get through, and I know Daryl can get through, the emergency operation plan, the mission, vision, and values. I'm basically just going to read the mission, vision, what the core values are, and recommend approval. So, it's not going to be a long presentation. And then, the request for the planning and zoning coordinator, there's a major fiscal impact in the event that we continue the way that the arrangement is going at this particular moment. So, at minimum, staff would recommend that at least if we can get through those items, the staff reports, I can get those rescheduled and put on another agenda. But I think we can get through those items pretty quickly. I can say probably by 9:05.
It's just, this is, this is just way too long. The whole agenda's way too. The, the whole agenda's way too long, I think.
Okay, it's very, yeah.
It's entirely too long, so, I mean, I'd keep that in mind next time.
I feel badly, though, that we're keeping staff here all this time and then not hearing their reports.
Yeah.
Well, they can go home now. We can do this later.
Okay.
All right, so then we're going to.
Not the emergency operation plan.
Right. And we're not going to do the staff reports.
Right.
The, the board would effectively have to take official action, because you did approve the agenda. So if you're going to make modifications and move that, you would have to take official action to effectively move the staff reports to another board meeting.
I make a motion that we move the staff reports to another board meeting.
We have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? Floor is now open for public comment. Floor is now closed for public comment. Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Weinstein?
I guess so. Okay, yes.
Commissioner Dowther?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes.
Okay. Next is the resolution 2018-07. Go chief.
That's me, I'll talk fast. Basically, what we're looking for is just renewal of our annual emergency operation plan, which basically lays out the framework for how we conduct business during emergency. It's not only hurricane season, it's during any type of emergency operation that occurs here within the city. It's basically with some slight modifications, the same thing that you've seen since the day that it broke down back in 2001. So it's got some modifications in there, but basically it's the same operation, same plan that we need to have renewed. There is a clause in here concerning compensation for salaried employees, and all of those funds are all reimbursable through FEMA reimbursement process and only during designated disaster operations.
And Madam Mayor, to the chief's point, the, the compensation modifications as it relates to both exempt and non-exempt employees only takes place when there is a declaration. So there would actually have to be official legislative action by this board, as well as the Board of County Commissioners and the governor, to effectively kick in what the compensation, the modification, the compensation would be. And all those fees are reimbursable through FEMA and those, the compensation strategy is consistent with what other agencies do. One of the things that we would like for the board is to take official action when they approve this item, is to allow for staff to make some modifications, there's some scrivener's errors, and there's some tweaks, but we will not change the legislative intent behind the document.
This is pretty much the same as last year's, correct? And just updated with names, addresses, phone numbers.
Updated and cleaned up some things, yes, sir.
That's what I thought when I read it.
I have a question. The, this document says it's the city of Madeira Beach and Reddington communities. When you turn the page, it says the city of Madeira Beach. Do, is that just because we have a separate plan versus theirs, or?
It's also pretty much the same plan, but by contract that we have with the city of Seminole and the three Reddington communities, we also provide emergency operations for those communities as well.
Okay. Okay. Any more discussion?
I need to read. Oh, read. Resolution 2018-07, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners for the city of Madeira Beach, Pinellas County, Florida, providing for amendments to the city of Madeira Beach disaster plan and providing for an effective date.
Floor is now open for public comment. Floor is closed.
I make a motion that we approve resolution 2018-07, emergency operation plan.
I'll second.
Any more discussion? Will city clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Commissioner Dowther?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Weinstein?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes.
Next, we have resolution 2018-08, the city's mission, vision, and values. City manager?
Madam Clerk, if you may read the resolution title into the official record.
Resolution 2018-08, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners for the city of Madeira Beach, Pinellas County, Florida, establishing a city mission and vision statement, as well as organizational values and goals and objectives intended to serve as the city's guiding ideologies as to how government in the city of Madeira Beach shall operate.
Madam Mayor, members of the Board of Commissioners, this item was discussed with the board late in 2017, and then a subsequent conversation occurred in 2018 through public charrette meetings. Staff working with the Board of Commissioners and members of the community was able to do something that others have not done, and that's a testament to the board and their leadership and the commitment from the community, and that's effectively adopting a mission, vision, and core values as an organization. In staff's research, we went back to 1947. We didn't have any employees that were still around from there, so we, we definitely looked in the records, and there was no actual official action where a board did what the board is about to do this evening. I will read to you the mission statement, the vision statement, the organization values, and the goals. The mission statement is as follows. Madeira Beach, a Gulf Coast Barrier Island community, provides exceptional service to our residents, businesses, and visitors in a manner consistent with the eclectic nature of our city. We celebrate a quality of life enjoyed by all. That is the mission statement. The vision statement is, Madeira Beach, gateway to the Gulf, is a welcoming, livable community dedicated to the preservation of our pristine natural beaches and our eclectic neighborhood, which creates a unique sense of place for all. The city of Madeira Beach organizational values are public trust, safety, transparency, teamwork, accountability, and professionalism. The organizational goals for the fiscal year 2019 budget and subsequent budgets would be human capital, internal and external communication, growth management, fiscal sustainability, and transportation and mobility. Again, I want to commend Department Director, staff, the board for their effort and work in this monumental task, and at this time, staff recommends approval of resolution 2018-08.
Well, I think it was an excellent program that we had, that I started participating in on April the 5th and 6th, and I certainly commend our city manager, Evans, for bringing it to us, because without his guidance, we wouldn't have, we wouldn't have gone through it. So I think it was excellent, I think the staff, many members of the entire staff participated as, as well as we did. And I'm looking forward to seeing some of these words that we put together on, on city, on our business cards, on, on city things. And I, I think that it was very, very timely that Marilyn Krati and Scott Payne were here when they were. I think that we needed this in this new administration, or new elected officials, I guess you'd say, not all of y'all, but especially for me. I think it was an excellent, very positive, very positive thing. Thank you.
I, I agree. It really was a very positive thing going forward, and it's going to be helpful to the mayor's council of Pinellas County, because they're looking to do a mission statement and vision statement, and they want to see all of what the cities have done.
I would also like to have these put on a plaque like back there on one of the walls, the, you know, the, the mission statement, the vision, and the, the values.
Yes.
And it could go where that plaque is right now, because that's outdated in the aspect of, it says charter officer was our city manager, and as we would learn from his attorney, he was not a charter officer, you know, so maybe we need to replace that with these things.
Certainly, that is definitely something that we want to do, is to have the city's mission, vision, and core values in any public meeting spaces that we have, our conference rooms as well, especially here in the boardroom, as you, as you walk in or prominently displayed. So staff is already working on that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anyway, provides pride in our city.
Correct.
We have that, yes.
Floor is now open for public comment. Floor is closed for public comment. Any more discussion? Will city clerk please call the roll?
We didn't make a motion.
No, we haven't made a motion.
Good idea.
I move that, oops, resolution 2018-08, mission, vision, organizational values, and goals be passed on first and final reading.
I'll second.
So, will, will city clerk please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Weinstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Dowther?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes.
Next, we have a fee adjustment for, I'm not going to read all those numbers, but it's to correct a billing error in 14133 Gulf Boulevard. Director Pierce?
Madam Mayor and Commissioners, I'll be brief with this. This is a correcting, correction to charges billed in error to 14133 Gulf Boulevard. The owner of the property located that address requested that the city review charges that Pinellas County Utilities had billed, possibly in error. And Pinellas County Utilities, they do collect refuge and stormwater for the city and remit those amounts collected to, to us. After doing some research on this, and I did this personally with the account associated, I'll read this for the record, 1001-240-66872, and the other one, 1001-240-66569. And looking at those, after the demolition of the two structures on this property, none of the costs for the refuge should have been kept charged, and none of, no one from our office communicated that to Pinellas County Utilities. Going forward, there is now an internal procedure between the building and finance department to notify the, the Pinellas County Utilities of any property demolished in the future. The charges that were assessed was 5,163.08 for the refuge. That's what we're recommending be corrected, and the, I've attached a report showing that as well. The, we also had some additional stormwater charges that continued to accumulate, those were fine. Now, I will say, after this correction is made, there will be an amount due to the city of 3,763.86, that will be due to the city. And I have been in communication with the Pinellas County Utilities. They, they're aware of the situation, they're aware of the commission is also looking at, you know, waiving this correction. I think typically, staff would have some leeway in making corrections like this, but what threw a dynamic, new dynamic onto this whole thing is that there is two liens in question on this property.
We never collected any, any of this money, correct?
Um, yes. A portion of this has been remitted to us, yes.
So we're going to have to pay that back out, then?
Some of it, yes. Now, there's a good part of this, the reason with, for the liens is that there hasn't been a payment, but some of this money could have been remitted to us. I think the bulk, the bulk of it is, has not been paid.
And the, the owner of the property has no responsibility in this at all?
The owner does.
To notify, you know, the water or the storage or whoever, he had no responsibility to do that?
Uh, to notify the.
Yeah, that, you know, the property was torn down and we shouldn't be being billed.
Yeah, I guess probably, he probably could have called us. I think the mechanics of all this might have been a little fuzzy for him of actually who does collect it. When I was talking to him, I think that he thought that the money was coming directly to us.
Madam Mayor, if I may, usually when you go through the process to pull a demo permit, that is the mechanism that allows for all these other components, capping utilities, making sure that those things are corrected. For whatever reason, that did not occur, and so we had a situation whereby there were some fees that were charged against that property. But what we're asking for tonight is the board's authorization to waive the fees contingent on, he then brings us the $3,700 that he still owes us, associated with actual fees that there were services rendered. So we don't want to carte blanche waive the fees, because then we know that we're not going to get that $3,700 back. So what we're asking for in the form of a motion is the board, if it is the pleasure of the board, to waive the fees contingent on, we receive certified payments of the monies that is still left outstanding.
Who has the lien? Who is holding the lien?
The county.
The county.
The county has put the lien on the property, and also, they, they would owe fees to the county as well. So the county collects on our behalf and on theirs as well.
Walt, is, is he this, is the owner now, okay, the same as, is he the person who did the demolishing? I mean, did he own the property all along?
Yes, as far as my, I understand, yes.
Well, then he should be responsible for it, should he not? I mean, if I tore my property down, I mean, it makes sense to me. If I, if I tore my property down, if I got the demolition order and someone came in, it's my responsibility to notify the utilities to be cut off, isn't it? They come get me.
In, in most situations, when I pull that permit, it's the, it's the entity, the government entity's responsibility, says, here's the demo permit, and your contractor and the, the city utility departments and other involved agencies are the ones that effectively cap the utilities and make sure. So there is some responsibility on the government entity, because it's my building, I'm pulling, I'm getting a demo permit, my contractor is taking the responsibility of doing that, but then the government entities have to be responsible for effectively capping utilities, making sure that everything is copasthetic. Yeah, and, and services are disconnected, because a layperson wouldn't necessarily know that, they would assume that that has all been resolved, and unfortunately, it wasn't. So there is some responsibility on the city and on the county's part, that's why both entities are looking to address the fees. However, there is some fees that are still left outstanding, and the city wants to make sure they recoup that at minimum before we would effectively waive any of the, the fees.
Okay, so is the $5,163, is that the net, or is that the, in other words, you said something about.
That, that 5,163.08 is the total of the ref, the garbage collection.
Okay, the total.
On those two accounts, that really should have stopped. And so that is the correction. So if that, that figure is waived and the balance is taken care of, the 3,763.86, as the city manager mentioned, so if these two things happen, there, that the account will go to zero as far as we're concerned, they'll still owe money to the, to the county, public, Pinellas County Utilities.
Okay, but we're only going to pay the difference of the 5,300 and the 3,700?
The, the total.
It would have to be a separate transaction. Effectively, what would have to happen is he'd have to give a certified payment for 3,700, and then we'll remit the $5,000, because it's, it's.
Okay.
It's the colors of money, it's a different funding sources, and so it's a.
Okay, so that's what you're saying, you're protecting the city.
Right.
Well, the Pinellas, Pinellas County Utilities, actually, the supervisor called me, and I've talked to a couple of people there. Once the commission approves this, and we make a phone call, of course, after we receive the other balance, they're able to make that correction.
Yeah.
All right. Do we have a motion?
Do we need to vote on this?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. I made a motion that we do the fee adjustment for parcel ID 0931-1534-3080030060 and 09-31-15-34308-0030070.
Upon the 20, upon the $3,700.
Upon what?
Upon receiving the 3,700.
Upon and receiving the portion of what they owe us.
I second the motion.
The floor is now open for public comment. Floor is closed for public comment. Any more discussion from staff or commission? Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Weinstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Dowther?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes.
I'll present her item.
Next, we have 2017-18, budget amending, creating a position for the planning and zoning director, coordinator.
Madam Mayor, members of the board, I'll go ahead and present this item. At this particular moment, currently, staff obtains professional services from a contractual provider to assist in planning and zoning. Currently, the provider assists the city for approximately 12 hours per week at a billable rate of $125 per hour. rate of $125 per hour. At this particular juncture, there is not enough monies that are available to carry that particular cost for the remainder of the fiscal year. So staff is recommending that we consider amending the budget and creating a position of planning and zoning coordinator. By doing so, we know that we would be able to have a better level of service, it would be at a cheaper rate, and we would have more local control and more real-time service to both the development community as well as our residents. The individual that we would be looking for would, we would be looking for somebody that can become a certified floodplain manager, as well as receive their AICP, which is from the American Institute of Certified Planners, effectively becoming a expert planner. In the analysis that staff has conducted, if we are able to bring this position on board, it will be cheaper, we would have the monies to be able to complete the rest of the fiscal year and then roll into next fiscal year. Also, with the ordinance, with ordinance 2018-03 that the board approved, with the additional fees associated with planning and zoning services, we anticipate a lot of that revenue will go to offset the cost for this particular position. So you're getting a better level of service at a cheaper cost and having more control and actually providing some additional help and backup for your planning and zoning director, who is, in essence, the principal planner, the, the chief planner, the planning and zoning director, so it's much needed for the department, and there actually is a fiscal savings to the organization in the event that we bring this position on board. And at this point, staff recommends approval, and the planning and zoning director is here to add any additional comments.
Same here, Madam Mayor, Commissioners. I think that the city manager covered everything. We, we have a lot of work that's actually going undone still, especially as regards to keeping up with all the paperwork and the analysis that's required for updating the comp plan and also the community ratings system, which is really critical to everybody's insurance rates. It's just a whole lot of work that we can't get to because of me covering everything. And I do have the consultants coming in to help, but it's quite an expense, so they aren't here very much.
The floor is now open for public comment. Floor is closed for public comment. Any more discussion from the commission?
No, I think it's probably much, much needed. Are you going to promise that the, one of the first things they're going to do is relieve you so that you can get back to that impact fee thing?
Yes, we'll work on that, definitely.
See that, John. Thank you.
I'll make a motion, fiscal year 2018, request to create a planning and zoning coordinator.
I'll second. Any more discussion? Will city clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Douthur?
Yes.
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Weinstein?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes. As far as staff reports, I guess we're just going to table that for another meeting. Under reports and correspondence, I just want to say quickly to, to the public who's listening to us that we haven't given up on John's Past Village. We're going to continue looking at ways to support them. We're going to continue to look at ways to, to use some of the BP oil money to help John's Past Village out. They are, we have not abandoned them. Any other reports?
We'll remind everybody and invite everyone to the public records training on Monday, starting at 9:00 a.m. And it'll go through about 4:30, and snacks and lunch will be provided by the city. So please invite everybody you can, and this is a very important session, the same as the other trainings that we have, and very beneficial and educational.
Clara, well, you said Monday, I thought there was Tuesday.
It's Monday.
It's Monday?
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other reports? Before you change your mind, the meeting is now adjourned at 9:14.